It is 6:30, well, the meeting of the Valosteet City Council. Please come to order. It is April the 8th. We are at the Grayson College South Campus. Tonight, our invitation is going to be led by Mark Fletcher. I've talked to Mark twice, and I finally tonight got to see his face to go with the voice. Last time he was going to join us, he had an emergency come up, and he was unable to come. Mark has been here for four and a half years. He's at the Elmont, that is true. He is, he and his wife both are from Ohio, so they've traveled five miles over the years, and we're really proud of that. He has four daughters. He does like to play golf, but with four daughters, I'm sure he has a little time. He enjoys living in a small town, since it's a really small town. He likes Valosteet, and he likes its stream. So if you will, please stand, and he is going to lead us in our meeting.
Thank you for the invitation to be here. I appreciate that. Let's pray together. Father, we thank you for this day that you've given it to us as a gift. You're the only one that can do that. Father, thank you for these city leaders that are entrusted with the task to lead and to make decisions on behalf of the residents of this great city. We thank you for them, their time, their energy, their effort, Father, their heart to do just what they do, in their paid positions and their volunteer positions. Father, we thank you for that. We pray that you bless them, give them discernment and wisdom that comes from you to make the decisions that have the city's best interest at heart. Father, may each action, each word that proceeds from here tonight, if you'd Lord it, be done in a way that pleases you and honors you, and reflects well on this city and your kingdom. And we thank you, we praise only you in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you will, remain standing while Councilwoman Harper leads us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And our Texas flag, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may proceed. Jennifer, do we have any citizens' communication? We have one citizen communication. I've, it's putting the part where in the fees, would you like me to wait until that's an agenda item? Thank you. Are there any other comments at this time, Jennifer?
No.
Thank you. Okay. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the March 17, 2014 special call meeting. I noticed on minutes, I did have some changes that were not made on this agenda that I sent to Mr. Baker. This moment, I have been, I'm sorry. I sent, I'm, April the 3rd.
Okay.
Are the changes that were not made, so I'd like to use text note of those changes. The first one was number seven, and number seven, I wanted change to Mayor Salmon and Frank Baker presented a plaque to John Jennings in appreciation of his contribution to the city of Valosteet while serving as a city councilman. The next change is number nine, and it is on the fifth line down near the right where it says invest in the city's field is protected, should be R. On number 10, I had requested on the seventh line down that you list Hanani diesel, four by four vehicles were to be purchased. On number 14 was changed. On number 15, at the end, if you go to the bottom one, with your fourth sentence up, Mr. Jaska advised that he would like to ask Mayor Salmon, I would like the word to read he would like to do as Mayor Salmon suggested. I would like to have those corrections made to the agenda, and I have a copy of the email that I sent if you need it that lists all of those. Are there any other corrections to the minutes at this time? Councilman Plug?
No.
Councilman Moore?
No.
Councilman Jaska?
No.
Councilman Smith?
No.
Councilwoman Harper?
No, mine re-creperated.
At this time, is there a motion that we accept the minutes as corrected?
I move we accept the minutes as corrected.
Is there, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is minutes. The next item on the agenda is item seven. Consider and take any action necessary regarding appointment of election judge and alternate judge in designating the election judge, alternate judge, and worker as the early voting ballot board for the May 10, 2014 general election. You will notice in your information in the packet that Jennifer has contacted 11 potential members for this, and the recommendation from the staff is that we, the appointment of the election and alternate judge will be at the pleasure of the council, but those who have expressed an interest in serving in an official capacity in the 2014 general election are Lwana Merriman, Nikki Cupid, and Ashley Ramone. Is there any discussion regarding this?
Yes, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to make you all aware that I had contacted the voter registrar's office to be sure that the three people that expressed an interest were qualified voters in the city's election, and Ashley Ramone is not, so she would need to be excluded from consideration.
We have two, and tonight we need to appoint one, an election judge, and the other is the alternate election judge. Is there a discussion or recommendation regarding that?
Okay, yes, I would like to recommend that we have Lwana Merriman as the election judge and Nikki Cupid then as the alternate.
Is it a recommendation, is it not a motion?
Well, you asked for any discussion, so I will make it a motion.
Well, do you have any discussion regarding that, Councilman Smith? Councilman Jaska?
I don't know. I'm a representative.
Okay, would you like to make that as a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is your next motion, yes. The next item on the agenda is consider and take any action necessary awarding a bid and authorizing city manager to execute a contract to purchase 973,083 in vehicles and equipment for the Public Works Department of Government Capital Corporation. These are two sep, this comes as two separate contracts. The items were in the March agenda. I have a list of those. So far, the public who does not have a benefit of the packet, I will be reading those off. And the vehicles and the heavy equipment, there will, there's one 2014 Ram 3,500 single point quail four by fours, power windows and launch valve for the seats, one trailer tow mirror, one trailer brake control, one clearance lamp, lamps, one LT 275 off-road tires, spray the bed liner, and two 2014 Ram 2,500 crew cab four by four, and this will be with the turbo diesel engine with the power windows launch, two trailer tow mirrors, two trailer brake control, two clearance lamps, and the LT 275 slash 70R 18E off-road tires, spray the bed liner, then a vacuum truck, excavator truck trailer, and a blower, cyclone separator, extendable boom with enough to reach for the centerline, powered boom rotation standard with boom, boom pendant control up and down telescope, boom swing, lighting package, drawbar. Those are the vehicles. The other is, that comes to 186,367 dollars. The other part is for a gooseneck trailer, sewer cleaner, jetter, push camera trailer, a trench shorter, combined space equipment, push camera dudette, traffic safety equipment, zero turn equipment, skid steer loader, mini excavator, caterpillar model 303.5, concrete saw, scan control system, booster pumps, aerator gear and motors, RAS pump repair of wheels number six water meters. That comes to 786,000, 786,716 dollars and 20 cents, which comes to a total, which I mentioned before. There is a contract that has been presented for our consideration of the amount of 973 8320. Councilman, uh, Councilman? City manager, Mr. Baker, do you have any comments you wish to make regarding this?
I don't, Mayor. We did, well, I did. We identified the rate of interest in the loan as well as on the, on your agenda item action page. We have Steve White, so he'll articulate any issue we may have. These items were identified as needed, Public Works, back in, during all the budget work sessions back in August and September, and we have Marty Sauls representing Government Capital, if you have any findings and questions.
Do you have any questions, Councilman Plug?
No.
Do you have any questions, Councilman Moore?
No, ma'am.
Councilman Jaska, any questions?
Well, the only question I had, I wasn't here in the budget process, so therefore I wouldn't, I wouldn't need approval, et cetera. Who can I ask a question to? What's, what was put into charge? Is it financing or is it equipment? Uh, no, the financing, it looks pretty attractive. I mean, if we can afford it, then yes, yes, it is. The only thing is, only question I had was, I mean, this is a lot of equipment. Do we need all of it, all of it moving in there?
Yes, we told them this back during budget work sessions.
Okay. And we have the manpower to operate. We have plenty of, we have plenty of.
That's correct, Senator Steve.
We have, we, you don't use it all at one time. Now, part of this, just this, just this last month, I spent $10,800 just on rentals. Now, the equipment for the trucks, the first one was a one ton, two-wheel drive, it's actually used to pull the equipment around on the trailer. The councilway had asked for us to get a price on the diesels because they felt like gasoline was, wouldn't last as long as it's reusing that price on gasoline. And what we found out there in the ice storm, we couldn't get around town and do any work other than my personal four-wheel drive. We are looking at the future, maybe get assault trucks, bids to slide into the trucks, so we do need four-wheel drive around town. But as for equipment, we were in violation of sewer because we didn't have a jetter that was working, and I've submitted all paperwork in. Mayor's got a letter to that, and the TCU is satisfied with the answer that I presented, but that's due to the fact our jetter is old piece of equipment, and we've already spent $12,000 in the last two years keeping the repairs on it. Now, just got it back from another three guys. It's all, it's, it's just like today, we worked in a ditch that's 14 foot deep, there's trench shoring is required by law for us to work in, the piece of equipment that we use to dig. Our equipment didn't dig 14 feet, so we actually have to dig. We've had to hydroback three lines out because of surrounding utilities. It's costing me $1700 every time they pull up here. I spent almost $5,000 just in the last two weeks on the back trucks.
Okay, and I guess, my next question is, is this going to, this is for, it's going to finance for seven years?
Seven years on the vehicles, and then 10 years on the equipment, and that's what we discussed with the project sessions. Was to break out the vehicles. Initially, we'd had everything 10 years. Council didn't believe that the vehicles will last that 10-year lifespan, so we brought the financing on the vehicle in down to seven.
Okay, and is this a partial request, or is this an suffice?
As far as initial equipment, this should, it should suffice on what Steve needs to get done in the next few years as we grow and as we, as our Public Works Department develops, we'll probably need additional equipment, but we'll need the town to grow as we anticipate.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
I don't know if I identified any surprise.
Vehicle numbers three, one, 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 five.
And equipment ones, three, one, one.
One, I don't know, yes, I mean.
I don't see this.
I was against a, a $5,000, no, during budgets, working on a budget. I think that's an excessive amount to borrow. There's no doubt that the equipment is necessary. There's no doubt that we have equipment that is failing and not sufficient to do what needs to be done, but I think it is dangerous for the city to spend a billion dollars all at one time on equipment that could be, in my opinion, put into segments. There was a time, and Steve, you and I had a conversation, that you said I need $300,000 worth of equipment. That, that was a long time ago.
Yes.
A lot has happened since then, that you've had the chance to reevaluate. I understand that, that's old news, but there was a time that that was, that that was enough. I think for us as a city to go into debt for a billion dollars on Public Works equipment, I'm not doubting the fact that it needs to be, we need it, we need it all right now, but in 10 years, we're going to need it all again, and, and that, that makes for a difficult process all over again when you have to buy everything all over again. My, and I use this as a, as a personal information, a personal knowledge. The restaurant that I have, everything was put in brand new seven years ago or so, and that's my equipment lasts about seven years. I'm looking at, everything that's in there has a time clock on it, and I can't afford to, and it shouldn't have happened, that I have, that I have to replace all of the equipment at one time. It has to be done in, for, in portions, perpetual maintenance and that sort of thing. And I, and I'm not telling you anything you don't, Steve, I, I respect you, I always have. I have made the comment in public and in front of your employees that you will be the salvation of the Public Works Department of Valosteet. I said that a long time ago, and I still believe that. I don't think it is responsible for the city to spend a billion dollars all at one time. My proposal then and is today, 375,000, use the money that's budgeted to pay off that 375. As soon as that's paid off, you can spend another 375. I would not be opposed to seeing the amount dedicated in your, in your budget to make payments stay there forever, but I don't think, and so you get every, every time you get 375 paid for, you go for another 375. It'll take 12 years to do that as opposed to 10, but you're gonna, you're gonna have new equipment all the time. I think 375 is, is the figure that I would be comfortable with. I was, I've never been comfortable with spending a billion dollars all at one time.
Well, one thing I want to address on that, of that million dollars, 519,000 is actually projects that are initially required to maintain our water system. You have a skates control system which controls every pump and every tower in this system. We've already lost it a few at once, and the system is so old, I can't get software updates. I only have the system, it's on part of it, on radio control, have the system on telephone. Booster pumps, it's just like the well that was not budgeted for 48,000. Some of this money in here is budgeted for a new water well, well six. Well six cannot run right now because the well's too shallow and the pumps are too old. 70,000 for air raiders at wastewater plant. If I don't get those air raiders up, then the city's gonna be in violation with TCU. The RAS pumps is air, is air injection to the sludge return. If we don't get that up, we're gonna be in violation with TCU. Of that million dollars, only 400,000 of that is equipment. The rest of it is water meters. We've already spent close to $20,000 in putting water meters in this year. If any new houses come in, I've got seven water meters left, and I haven't more money budgeted. I mean, that's, that's where we're staying on.
If the maintenance of the system needs to be very distinctively identified with and funded by rates, not by bonds, not by, not by mortgages, and I know that's not a pretty subject to say either, that, that, the line behind me on that is gonna, it's gonna be very short, I understand that. If you're spending money for maintenance, it needs to be very clearly identified as maintenance and not as equipment, because it doesn't say that. It says, consider and take action necessary awarding a bid, authorizing city manager to execute contract to purchase 973 for vehicles and equipment for Public Works Department. It doesn't say a word in here that we're gonna spend that money for something other than what it says on this agenda. That needs to be very clearly stated that that's maintenance, and it needs to be put in to cover by rates as opposed to borrowing money. What you're asking us to do with this money and what you're actually gonna do with it are two different things. And Steve, I, I have the utmost respect for you as a, as a Public Works Director and as a person, but you're asking us to borrow money for something that, other than what it specifically, I don't understand, and that I have a problem.
Yes, I also am very concerned about the million dollars, especially when you add the interest, you have the principal and interest together, and it comes to 1,118,115 dollars over the seven to 10-year time period. But when we have less than 30 days working capital, I don't know how we can say that we can borrow a million dollars or more. The audit just, you know, verified that last month. In the budget process, I was very clear that I did not want to spend all of it all at once, and that it should be incremental, and then when the mayor and I went to the TECOG small business, or small city thing, they were talking about purchasing equipment and lending it out to cities, and I don't think, now, I think it would be worth our while to find out what's happening with that and what type of equipment they're talking about before we go and buy it, unless we're planning to rent it out to other people, because we can't afford this. There's just no way that we can pay this, and so I, I cannot go along with that. And the other thing under the recommendation, it says staff recommends, and again, I would like a name to be put to that so that I know that people are accountable, not just staff, but who on the staff is recommending this action be taken.
Then you've got Department head authorization, so Steve White, Director of Public Works, approval for council consideration, Frank Baker, city manager. If you look back in what we approved for the budget on the enterprise fund side of Public Works, 973083.20 was clearly identified in the budget, and the monies were set aside. This is actually the sum of less than what we budgeted for on the equipment, the materials, and vehicles.
Well, to me, 250,000 would be an appropriate thing if we do it incrementally. I am not for spending a million dollars all at once. That's it.
The workshop that we attended, memory serves me right, all of the small towns were having a problem with equipment. They were having to rent equipment, and what TECOG was trying to coordinate or suggested was not that TECOG bought the equipment, but that all the small towns got together in a co-op effort in that perhaps we would have three things that another small town would need, or they would have something that we would need, and they were promoting a co-op effort, and when you added it, broke your responsible heart. How far along they got with that, I have no idea, but, but that was what I thought. Okay, is, is there any further, we have each one has had their comments, and that pledges, depends the, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go right ahead.
Yes, Ms. Sauls?
Yes.
Based on this information here, I mean, I understand the financing. Were you aware that we were gonna be financing more than the equipment? And two, is that okay with you? Does this change any of the financing terms with that knowledge coming in?
No, sir. I was provided a complete list of all the equipment, and I think on one of the pages it listed four or five of the projects that Stephen spoke of, and those are all equipment that can be financed, the pumps and blower. And those are all equipment that can be financed, the pumps and well refrigerators. That's also some property that we did. And that's almost the practice.
It's the cooperating, the skating system. What's the equipment that?
No, the pump kicks.
Well, that's the equipment. So that's, on the state's equipment, that's exactly what it is. It's equipment that's going in place. It's fixed, it's fixed equipment versus equipment that can be utilized monthly. Is that correct, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You want to speak to the cooperative efforts of other cities and to going out and having to try and rent equipment and availability?
Like I said, when we were, when our Jetter went down, we tried all surrounding cities to rent theirs, even borrowing, anything they'd borrow, even under the threat of TCQ. I actually had to go to Dallas and I had to rent one. It took me two days to get rental because all the other cities were renting them out. So anytime I wait on a sewer feed or sewer field, I'm basing a possible plan and somewhere on the water. If we go down, it costs a skating system. The skating system, like I said, actually controls the whole water system in this city. If it goes down, we're without water, we're without any control of the water. I'm borrowing from other cities, like I said, we talked to other cities about maybe going in with Howe and, and they, they were saying they had them later, but. And we're in a situation where it's, every day we have something fatal.
What equipment have you borrowed from other cities?
I borrowed a couple towns from Howe, Jetters. I borrowed once from a gunner for, as a Jetter. And Howe's borrowed our backhoe and dump truck a couple times. And our dump truck is a pretty sad shirt when it's been borrowed.
You're not gonna ask to borrow our hours?
No, ma'am.
I don't think they're going to ask to borrow our hours.
Well, Howe has.
Oh, it has?
Yeah.
Do you even borrow the concrete saw from?
We actually had to rent it at five hundred hours, five hundred dollars a week. When we'd be done, one twenty-one, we'd be almost seven thousand dollars in loan. So anytime we make a repair in State Highway or some of these areas, we actually, this repair we just did today was almost thirty-five hundred dollars just to run the way. And that takes care, I mean, it's eaten up my maintenance budget.
I have one more question. When this equipment is, is purchased, is it to be rented out or is it to be for our use alone?
It's actually for our use, but I mean, with work with effort in those cities, we've actually, Howe came over and we had to work with an octagon and assisted us in repairs. We've assisted them some. When Anna had the problem, we assisted them with vampire. And then you've got to have some type, all of us, all of us are small cities and small vampire. And some cities don't have it and some cities do. But the majority of it's gonna be for us, yes.
Usually the equipment is done in that manner and an employee goes with the equipment and runs it and they pay a fee not only for the equipment but for that employee. Is that correct?
I don't know. I mean, we've just been trading out.
Have you had any procedure, I guess, as well?
And some type of municipal, we used to use that as mutual aid for its fire service. And the city around here needs to provide some type of mutual aid for its equipment repair or if something happens to personnel on water leaders or something, those things bother me.
I have some more to ask.
One more question. In the budget process or the cost savings of renting the equipment, taking, I mean, does that take into consideration in that whole thing? Or is that just recently that, that, that the rent, he's having to rent the equipment?
Has he gotten any more detailed work? I mean, renting the equipment's become more frequent. I mean, he was borrowing equipment at first, but with other cities having the same kind of bug that we are and their equipment's out, or not out of date, but just run down and in a state of disrepair and non-maintenance. You know, he's going, having to compete with other cities and other contractors to try and rent the same equipment. So the mayor might not be available as far as the camera equipment to try and identify along with our street program what, what sewer lines are, are in bad shape, what are gonna, what are gonna allow us to repave a road that's in bad shape as well. You know, we've got a bunch of different issues we're trying to take care of with, with the different equipment. Not, not one piece of equipment is, is for, you know, a lone task. I mean, he's, he's identified multiple uses for each piece of equipment. I would say aside from those cameras, I mean, those aren't dedicated to sewer. But, I mean, it's, this is a lot of, I understand it's a lot of equipment at one time. The problem is there hasn't been a replacement plan or program in place for years. And I think you should come to a head.
And we have a purchase program.
What's that?
I don't believe there was a purchase program. I've got the questions.
Are there items that we could do without this year that we could postpone till next year? Do we need to buy all the water meters, for example, that radio operates so they can control, you know, be read from the trucks rather than going up to the, read the meter? Or are there other things that just aren't quite as important that we could postpone and delay?
You're talking about the meters that, that's gonna help reduce the amount of time I'm spending between seven to eight days reading meters. So I'm only getting to work two days, two weeks a month on any repairs in the city. To me, that is a cost savings because I can actually get men out within two days reading the meters and then complete it and then put them where they can actually be working in the field somewhere. As for the meters, we projected, we've already used almost ninety meters since the budget's been approved. I only hit twenty thousand dollars in the meters. We've already exceeded twenty thousand dollars and it, and they are important. And it told me this last week, we're gonna have to install fifteen more meters in the next two weeks. So, I mean, it, it's growing where it's kinda hard to predict how many meters you're gonna use whenever new houses are popping up. We have old meters that's probably thirty years old. Some of them are not recording after, some of them are barely recording at all. And we have to take new meters, we have to dedicate for new homes and put them in the field because the older meters are going out.
When you have a new home, don't you have the impact fee and the taxes and all of that?
We didn't have an impact fee.
But today?
Today, yes, but.
If you use a meter, then you have income to buy it up?
Yeah, but like I said, we've, we've probably replaced twenty-five meters that's in the older section of town in the last three months that was not, was not budgeted for. But we figured all the new meters that we're gonna need were gonna be in Georgetown, but it's not. I mean, it's being spread out all over the city. We had three meters in the last two months that was vandalized, people breaking lots off and tearing the lots up. We have vehicles, have damaged several meters. We had this freeze came along, this, when we had eight degrees, we had fourteen meters freeze and busted. I mean, it's, it's just something that you can't predict. And if we, I mean, like I said, if they come in and say they need fifteen meters, I've got seven meters sitting on the shelf. And that's gonna be eight of the houses that we're gonna have to work.
Okay, but are there other things other than, than the meters, other equipment that could be, that you could hold off for a year or two years? That they, everything doesn't have to be purchased this year?
Like everything in this project, skating system, if it goes down, there's no water. There's nothing controls the pumps on and off. Actually, if the skating system goes opposite direction, I can set and run water out of every tank and never know until we get out there next month. That skating system lets me know whenever something goes wrong with wastewater plant and the water going.
Well, how have we been existing for the last twenty-five years?
We've got a thirty-year-old skating system. And it's software-based and it's not, the software can't be updated. Last year, we took two lightning hits that cost about twelve thousand dollars on, on skating system for repairs. The booster pumps, like I said, if we lose a booster pump on one of the wells, I can't transfer water to the tower. And everyone, I've replaced one last year. That was a P P horse and that was nine thousand dollars for that one. I've got twelve booster pumps. And most of them are probably twenty, twenty-five years old. The air raiders, like I said, at wastewater plant, that's what injects air into the sludge. If it goes down, then I'm not gonna meet TCQ's requirements. And I've got two air raid pump, motors down right now. And I've had, only got one air raid running. The RAS pump, like I said, either I'm going to buy a new air system or I'm going to go to the RAS, this RAS pipe pump to return the sludge back to the, that's from digestive to the tractor. And if I don't get that back, then we're not, we're gonna be, you know, compliant with TCQ. Well six, I'm down, like I said, I'm down to one, four wells down. If I don't get well six up running, I have, I don't have, that's about two hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water reserved that I can pump and hold on to.
Well, what about then, you know, we could have talked in other meetings about opening the lines so that Georgetown can get the water from the line that we've been paying for. That would provide water for the city that we, where we maybe wouldn't have to buy all this. The connections are there, everything's ready for the, you know, a, a small connection and then start using that water?
It runs through well six, well six is down. The booster pumps and all transfer from well six and trunks.
Okay, so maybe we could fix well six and start using that water and not have some of these other expenses?
Well, if skating system goes down, well six, well four, well three, well two, well one, and well five is all down.
That's all speculative though?
No, ma'am. This happened this year from lightning hits. If I cannot get the software updates, then we're not gonna have water. I mean, this already happened. Frank paid for my budget. I was over budget last year on repairs of it. I'm working on aging system and aging systems is in sad shape.
But I think each one of us as citizens is working on, you know, at least if you live in an older home as, as I do, yeah, we, we all work on older things and we have to make do or try to, try to make do. And I would like you to consider some of the things that we maybe do not need this year.
Well, let me ask you a, the trenches that we work in according to law, we're not allowed to work in a vehicle five foot without safety equipment. That's seventeen thousand dollars. This is in this lump right here. I'm in the rent every time I get in a hole over five foot. The traffic control, the law speculates how we had to have the type of traffic, protective signs and barricades out. I purchased a little over the time, year I've been here, but when I got here, they didn't have already anything. And it, it not only falls the liability on me, but it also falls on y'all. Because if I don't have the funds to purchase it and I had it, had if I submitted it and it's kind of proved in both of us, then, and liability. But, I mean, I just can't see where, if you want me to maintain this system if I can't, if I don't have it right.
How much of that that you've just talked about, this skating system and that sort of thing, is maintenance?
All, I mean, all of it, all of it is for maintenance.
And that should be a legitimate item, a, a rate item as opposed to a mortgage item, right? Theoretically?
We took this, we looked at the rates and tried to fit what we could into the rates and we've seen it, it didn't go well in the rates at all. So we went for another dollar turn to method by putting it in this one at three percent.
Have you applied for any grants or any?
There's no grants. I've applied for loans, but that's, we've got one for a sewer right now because I follow on the, the line from Georgetown to the wastewater plant is too small. I applied for that. I've also applied for repairs at wastewater plant, put in a sludge drying system because we can't pump enough sludge, we got so much sludge in our system from infiltration of the sediments and stuff, we can't pump it out fast enough. So we actually had, I had, every, twice a year, I had to pay him to come in here and pump the sludge out of the system at forty thousand dollars because I can't remove it from the system.
And I was, someone approached me and said, you know, was it Whitesboro or White, right, one of the, one of the Whites, you know, they have a guy there that used to work for T's, T-COG and he was a grant writer and that, you know, he, they, they're getting all kinds of money through grants. And I questioned, do we not have grant writers or have we not even looked at them? Have we not applied? You know, is there money out there that we could get?
I let men talk that. He deals with grants and bonds and financing, but everything I've ever looked at, the last time I, I think it's been ten years since it's been a grant on wastewater and water side put out by federal government, most of it's been soil and water conservation loans.
What's available to us in low interest loans through TC, through Texas Water Department for the water line and for that searing? This was budgeted, this amount more than this was budgeted. Yes, within the rate, the assistance that we did receive was available to the supplies. The consultant that helped us build the water line.
Right, and I just, and I didn't vote for it and I still am not for it.
I understand. But Steve, Steve brought the issues and concerns to us and what it's gonna take for him to work on maintaining and repairing the system. This is all budgeted. This is everything that we were trying to achieve back in August and September.
I've got one more question for financing here. At what point do we reach our credit limit? How much more money can we pull? And if, if you don't wanna answer or you can't, not qualified to answer, just say so and it'll be dropped. I don't wanna put you in an awkward position.
I can't, I couldn't give any numbers off the top of my head because I would have to frankly look at your current audit and look at the, the revenues over expenses at the end of the year and do some debt ratio calculations to do that. But I'm not in the business of lending money to people that can't pay back. So, and, and these loans are, we have gone through all the audit financial statements and have carefully looked at the financial capacity of the city.
Well, the next two, four, five billion dollars for the loans that we've applied for, will those be as attractive as this to voters? Again, I'm sorry, that, that's quickly recorded, I didn't, I didn't mean, my, my concern is everybody has a credit limit. Sure, and we already have nine point two million starting with. And then we're gonna, we're already looked at and talked about two million here, two million there, a million here. There's, there's gotta be a point that we're gonna get close to that credit limit and when we really need money, when there is a catastrophe, we're gonna be in the sad shape to go hat in hand and try to borrow some money when we're not qualified, when we don't have enough credit limit to, to borrow. That's, that's my, that's my concern. And again, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can really.
I'm not trying to pin you down, but there's, there's got to be a point that we have, that we have to stop borrowing money to be financially responsible. And obviously, you wouldn't be here if you didn't, if you're gonna get your money.
Well, absolutely, and, and we have reviewed, like I said, we have done credit reviews on these and, and there's federal lending laws and they're in place to protect everybody. We can't lend money really, feel like there's gonna be a default, that's in nobody's best interest.
And this money is approved?
It is, it's all approved and these are fantastic rates and they're all fixed rates. And another consideration too, sometimes in a tough decision, the cost of delay is something that's not really seen on your paper. All the interest rates, three percent. The equipment that you don't buy this year may increase in cost five percent next year. The equipment that you don't buy this year may increase in cost five percent next year.
Ma'am, I can't hear you too well down here.
Okay. I'll use my outside voice. The item on the agenda is consider and take any action necessary awarding a bid and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract to purchase, to the purchase of nine hundred and seventy-three thousand eighty-three, a hundred twenty cents, not twenty cents personally, in vehicles and equipment for the public works department. Is, uh, we have had, uh, a discussion of all at this time, is there a motion?
I make the motion, we approve allowing the acquisition and financing to go forward?
Yeah.
For the public works department?
There is a motion, is there a second to this?
I'll say.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion regarding this?
Yes, ma'am. One more, one more question. Steve, is this going to get us the, the, from what I'm hearing, we're getting in and staying in compliance as well as updating our equipment, right?
That's what, that's the purpose of the whole deal, because I'm having trouble maintaining compliance. And like I said, I, this time I was out of compliance because I didn't have equipment. And that'd get, well, part of the compliance that says, and I think we're supposed to, is I supposed to jet and clean our lines annually and visually inspect them? I cannot do that at this time.
And if I may, you may be wanting to answer, how much are the penalties for compliance?
Well, it just, it depends on what T C U wants to finance. It depends on, it depends on the violation.
The last time we were found was thirty-eight thousand?
Uh, it started out as, as what, seventy-six thousand?
Seventy-six thousand.
And then negotiated down to thirty thousand and then, uh, turned into the household hazards and disposals today, which heads on to where we're going to give you reciprocation on the money that you paid for violation. So, it, it can be another thing, if it's one that's in town, it's, you know, go ahead and land it.
The, the T C U standard violation is ten thousand dollars a day per violation if they want to enforce a whole amount. They obviously, if you're showing progress and making, you know, and making progress in your maintenance of your system, then they tend, they have a tendency not to find you the full amount, but that is, according to the law, that is their top requirement, it's ten thousand per day.
What jail time is, possible jail time?
Right, that's for you.
Let you handle that.
So, this is, this is a period that's going to be up to Councilman, say, kind of, we have to, we got four months.
Sure, but it's, it's, it's already built in the way, it's already, this, this whole amount is built in, built in the right structure and that's, and that's what we're going to continue to do.
We have a motion by Councilman Plight, second by Councilman Mower, to award a bid and authorize the city manager. All votes in favor, please raise your hand. Three, opposed, two, motion passed. The next item on the agenda is consider and take any action necessary regarding adopting a resolution to enter into the financing agreements for the acquisition of vehicles and equipment for the public works department. Now that this has been passed, uh, that we need to adopt a resolution to enter into the financial agreement. Are there any questions regarding this? Councilman Plight?
No ma'am.
Councilman Mower?
No ma'am.
Councilman Jaska? Councilman Smith? Councilwoman Tarver? There are no questions or discussion at this time, is there a motion?
I make the motion, we enter into agreement to adopt, enter into adopting a resolution to, for the financing agreements for the acquisition of vehicles and equipment for the public works department.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there any further discussion? I have a question, uh, something that I was asked and the question was, is our city manager bonded?
Yes.
Or the amount of?
Whatever, all the partners.
I would like to know the amount then.
All right.
Okay, uh, we have the motion by Councilman Plight, second by Councilman Mower, those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, motion passed, three far, two against. Number ten, consider and take any action necessary awarding a bid and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract to purchase, uh, for the purchase of a fire engine, ambulance, command vehicle, and equipment for the fire department from government capital corporation for six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. This includes, this is in two parts, and this is far, let me see it. Okay, this is far four hundred thousand dollars, and this is for a fire engine, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is for an ambulance, command vehicle, and a cot. Uh, this authorization is from our fire chief, Landon Smith, and approved by Frank Baker. Uh, this was also approved in the two thousand and fourteen, uh, budget, approved the acquisition of a loan for the purchase of a fire apparatus, ambulance, cot, command vehicle. Contracts presented for your consideration are, are quoted, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. This time we will start at this end. Councilman Plight, do you have any questions regarding this?
I don't remember, what's the cot?
Uh, basically the journey.
Oh, okay, like the ambulance? Okay, okay. And we're talking about a big, is this a big ambulance, like the one we have, like the, not the big diesel one that we got? Or is it a?
You know, it's not the big, Ronny and Cody X out.
Okay.
The one we're currently looking at. The original, I've agreed on all the specs since we, you know, delayed times budget because the original one that we presented in budget, that Dodge, very similar to that, that one is, doesn't meet our needs anymore because it would take us eight to ten months to get it. And we currently need an ambulance as soon as possible because we're going to.
How many ambulances will we end up with in, when we get this?
We're going to sell one of our current ambulances.
So we'll have?
About three.
Three, three running all the time? And the command vehicle is a?
Uh, the command vehicle is another vehicle for us to use, basically reliable vehicle for building inspections, fire investigations.
What kind of vehicle is it?
Uh, right now it's a, just a Dodge four-door fifteen hundred truck.
That's all, thank you.
Councilman Mower, do you have any questions?
Can you address a couple of the vehicles that we're replacing and the reasons why we're needing to replace them?
Uh, well, the engine is going to be replacing, our current engine one, um, which is ten years old, it doesn't meet, uh, standards anymore. Pump was rated at twelve hundred fifty gallons and it's no longer able to keep up with that, which is a apparent risk to everybody, basically businesses, homeowners, you know, plus my guys, which also affects us in our ISO rating. So we're also looking to basically reduce the maintenance costs because one of our big selling points when they purchased that vehicle two years ago was the cash unit, we're no longer able to use the cash unit because of some maintenance issues that, um, Hallmark's had it three of the times and they can't really figure out what's going on, it's packing it, putting basically our pass, which is like a soap, kind of bill to kind of break it down, uh, back into our main water tank and all this stuff. We've had major electrical issues with that truck where all the power is shut off, we're slumming to calls, uh, three times in the past five months. Basically all the headlights, everything just goes out. Estimate quote, they said in the twenty thousands with that. Fix the pump, we're talking about replacing it altogether fifty, sixty thousand. Basically vehicle maintenance audit, we're looking probably eighty to a hundred thousand. Truck isn't worth that. So that's one of the big reasons we're looking at going with the new engine, something that will help us find so safer, up to date specs and standards and FDA regulations. Basically the ambulance issues, uh, look, our vehicle maintenance budget is just crazy this year. We've already, past three months, we've probably lost fifty thousand in revenue because we've been running out of one ambulance. We can't, we've replaced a motor in the past month and two transmissions in different One is down right now that we already spent twenty-four thousand on in maintenance this year and we just got a quote for it, it needs another fifteen thousand in maintenance right now. I mean, these trucks are old, they're worn out, I mean, they're built to do certain things and when you're running less ambulance, I mean, three years, you usually all get out of them, eighty to a hundred thousand miles tops, we're pushing two hundred thousand, two of them and a hundred thousand together.
One of them was in a wreck, wasn't it?
One of them was wrecked. Insurance did help out with that, but that truck is still not running right. It's actually the one that we're replacing, it's number eight solid prime, and a private electrical system in the engine also. Basically also to build the ambulance is a cot, these are cots that we need to commonly purchase when you get a new ambulance, all of our cots are, um, are getting very outdated, some of them don't work very well, the, um, some of them aren't failing, the headrest and all that stuff, shocks in them are all failing, we've had a couple of failures where the cot has completely collapsed, the patients on them. One almost went to litigation on, one we made to the litigation and we currently going through that, um, because they've seen it contribute to the passing of the patient. So that's one of the issues with cot, it hits power pot, um, which also is going to help us with this, reduce, uh, back injuries and loading them. It basically helps us when picking up larger patients all the way from the ground, it'll help, basically hydraulics can do that for us. Main vehicles also another vehicle that's very important probably, you guys have seen other fire departments, smaller fire departments, bigger fire departments, and why they have TOS trucks and all those things to do inspections, to do fire investigations, just so basically we can respond, run command, a proper vehicle instead of an engine or an ambulance. That's kind of all of it. That's it.
We're going to have to rearrange this table, I can't see. Councilman Plight, Councilman, I have some, Councilman Jaska.
Oh, okay. Answered a lot of questions that I was going, going to answer.
How much, how many, you said how many ambulances and how many trucks do we have?
We currently have three ambulances, um, two engines, one pressure.
Okay. How much life expectancy is left on the ones that you're monitoring?
Ambulance lives, here on minute four, uh, we're going to keep minute one, which is actually the oldest truck we have. We just replaced the transmission and engine in it the past year, so we're hoping to get another two years out of it, realistically. The other engine two, the one we're not selling, um, it's an older truck, but for some reason, it's a very well-built truck. It pumps over the standard capacity, um, so that's why we're choosing to keep that. There's no issues really with it, I mean, it's, it has a few issues, a few suspension, a few safety issues. It was also wrecked several years ago. My understanding, they, we were going to tow it and they ended up fixing it, but you know, that kind of, always when a vehicle's damaged so severe in the frame, they rip, bend the frame back out, it does lead to issue, wear on tires, it doesn't run very good at high speeds, and that's why we keep it as a backup bolt because when it's a backup engine, primary engine's there, it doesn't need to be that first in. You know, it's coming, it's bringing water and personnel and very important equipment, but we're not relying on it to maintain the higher speeds.
Before I got as involved as I have in this, I never, uh, realized that the ambulance, uh, service, I guess, could be a revenue generator. Do you foresee this improving, the opportunity to increase revenue for?
I, I definitely hope so. Over the, the past few months, with all these ambulances being down, especially when, I think it was three weeks, we only had one ambulance, I mean, we're turning down two, three calls, non-emergency calls, and that's where we're talking about the revenue, uh, which, then after we got the ambulance back, I'm going around calling people, hey, but you know, we're available, because they stopped calling by the end of it. And I talked to, you know, all the people, the charge attorneys, all this stuff, who was responsible for calling, and they're like, yeah, we know you have an ambulance down. We're like, we're not going to call you anymore. I'm like, well, and not to mention the numerous nine-one-one calls that we had calling in other cities, other departments, that were for us because we were on call or, you know, so it really has affected us. So putting a new ambulance in service, hopefully getting one, rid of one of the trouble units, hopefully this will help us, I mean, realistically, we need all three running all the time. We don't truly have a backup per se ambulance that sits off in the corner and doesn't be used.
So when y'all worked up the budget this last year, was it contingent upon all three operating or was it contingent on just two operating?
All three operating.
Okay. So going forward, basically going to have the same revenue, it's not going to really improve revenue strength for the next year?
No.
So it's going to be maintaining what we've got?
Yes, going to help us, because I mean, the last two months, I said, we've probably lost eight thousand in revenue. And you can't pin that number down exactly because you don't know call type, insurance type, there's several variables that go into it, but just on pure call volume, you have a good chance it was that. So hopefully that'll keep us from that because, you know, we've got to make up that revenue, which we, we've done a great job, because our call volume has increased this year, it is higher than what was predicted.
Whoever's been buying the fire trucks and ambulance and been doing it, I mean, you've got a real clue, a clue on how these pieces of equipment are falling apart. Were they bad to start with? Was, was engine one not ever capable of pursuing what it was supposed to do?
It was, the, the story, the story behind engine one and how it was purchased, which we, we talked about in budget, um, is one of the things that's really hurting resale value on it. They, company put it together because CAPS was the newest, latest, great thing, and it is a great thing, it does help put out fires tremendously. So they took it to the fire chiefs convention in Dallas. On the way back, they stopped in Van Oosteen, the city purchased it because it had CAPS in it. Well, there's no rear discharge on it, so we can't run hosts off the rear of the truck, which is a common thing, most fire trucks have, I would say ninety, eighty percent of them do. It doesn't have all the discharges and intakes on the officer side or passenger side of the vehicle. All this stuff was not, I've talked to personnel who had a part in purchasing that truck and they were kind of like, you know, we really didn't know that at the time and I didn't, and they didn't, they said they didn't have the final set. So, in my professional opinion, I wouldn't have bought that truck because it doesn't meet the needs of the city.
And the, the fact that the pump doesn't work?
I, it's ten years old. With any pump, um, which, you know, Steve has the same thing.
You talked about engine two, that's much older than that and has a pump that's still going.
It's just like anything, a lot of companies we did. It's just like anything, a lot of some things we did.
Apparatus when you bought it, I mean, was, was the whole deal bad, that we're having to replace it before it's even paying for?
Um, I don't think it's, it was a bad truck, I don't think a manufacturer produced a bad truck on purpose or anything like that. I mean, it's just one of those things, some vehicles last longer than others. Really, it's kind of one of those things, it's, has a lot of issues that they've gone with, while with it.
Okay, on the maintenance that you talked about, on the, on the ambulances, the engines, the transmissions, and all that stuff, is that normal? Is that average, to have to do that?
Like I said, the average lifespan of an ambulance is three years, and we're looking at seven, ten years on these ambulances. And frontline ambulances, I mean, usually, an ambulance will, a city will get new ambulances, that'll be their frontline trucks for the first year. The second year, it goes to a less busy station or a backup role. Third year, it's in reserve completely, or if something happens to the trucks that are newer. And then after the third year, they get rid of them. That's kind of the standard practice.
The maintenance that's done on them, are they, do you take them to the same repair shop every time?
No, sir.
Do we have a designated mechanic that works on our equipment?
We've had, depending on the issue, most of the issues and all the major issues are done at the dealership. So they can keep it all, just so they know what's going on, other different issues.
Has it always been that way? Could you see them in Adams all the time?
You do. Usually, Adams is, the smaller things, tire replacement, things like that, anything engine-wise, it goes to the dealership. We have had Adams replace a transmission in a truck before, strictly due because of price quote and money.
Is it cheaper?
At the time.
So we, we kind of got took on the fire truck that we're having rear points, is, I mean, I realize that's a, a habit to understand, but we really didn't get, and it's, you said that the previous person that, that bought that didn't probably have control over the new, the new, the city council or city manager?
I don't know city council or city manager at that time. It was, you know, purchased eleven years ago, they did ownership, ten years, over ten years ago. I mean, I've just talked to some of the guys who were employed at the fire department. At that time, they had a public safety director, is what I was called, who had the final say on it, who was not a firefighter or had anything to do with that.
So is this new, we're, we're gonna get trade-in of a hundred and thirty thousand on the old fire truck, is that, is that still a good one?
The gain of asset of sales is what you're referring to, that we've budgeted, that's also the ambulance and everything.
Okay, so the hundred and thirty thousand is a fire truck and ambulance?
Yes, and this is the way your equipment here.
Are we gonna still get the hundred and thirty?
Try and pack in, make sure we do, or get more.
Don't we still owe them that fine rate?
No, we're paying off. We budgeted before that payoff.
When?
Next year.
Next year?
Not this year.
This year, the end of the year, end of our budget year?
We called them, I think, three weeks ago, and they gave us a final quote for it, just had a full trigger on it.
Oh, was, um, we got one?
Oh, it was fifty, fifty some of them, some change.
Now, we're, we're getting, we're, we're not getting the same information we got during the budget process, because during the budget process, we have the payment of fifty thousand or whatever it was here, this year, in, in the current budget, and then the payment, the final payment was due the day of the new budget, October first, end of 2015. So we still have one more payment, is what we were told, and I, I remember that distinction, that we still have one more payment past, and we've already made a payment this year, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the, so the payoff is fifty thousand, and that's not gonna be, that's not budgeted in this year's budget, it's, it's budgeted in the.
We haven't heard it, and that's what we discussed.
But the hundred thousand maybe is something.
That, that, that is contrary to the information we're gonna do in the budget process, I, I, I'll make that statement.
That's why we're recording the budget workshop, sir. Welcome to go back and take a look at that, we've got minutes as well.
The other one is for ten years, and this one is, and the other is for eight years also, and then the ambulance is five years. What is the normal life of a fire truck?
Depending on the use, around ten years is what they recommend for a frontline.
Only ten years? So I've, I've been given up their figures, that, yeah, they, a fire truck should last us a lot longer than just ten years. And I was, I'm curious as to why, you know, this one is just, you know, ten years and we want to get rid of it, or is it just, you know, because it isn't meeting our needs? I had heard up to thirty years, but I, again, I, you know, I have no, no knowledge of it, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, it's pretty much national standards, ten years for a frontline engine.
Ten years is, is normal? Okay, so then I was given incorrect information that should last us a lot longer.
And it depends on the department of use.
Do we have high usage here?
For certain things, we do. Our new engine's gonna be styled after a rescue truck more than just a true, just pump water, because medical calls, corrects, kinds of that, that it's just one of the five.
Isn't it required to respond in all of those, or is it not?
When we have the personnel. We have to, with our limited personnel, we have to do less vulnerability, so sometimes if we only have two personnel available, we have to take an ambulance, that's what we deem to be the most needed thing at the time.
I thought it was required.
We just, our city does not require a staff part of, we just staff ambulances.
Do you, when you, like when you have an accident on seventy-five highway?
I'm not finished, uh.
Okay, the male was asking, but, I'm sorry.
Okay, now, I'd like an idea, you have a property cost of two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars for the ambulance, command vehicle, and cot. Can you break that down for me? How much is the ambulance? How much is the command vehicle? And how much is the cot?
Hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
One seventy-eight, five hundred and what?
Seventy-nine.
Okay.
For the ambulance?
Mm-hmm.
Command vehicle, forty-one thousand.
Forty-one thousand?
Yes, ma'am. The cardiac monitor, thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars.
I don't see that on here.
It's in the equipment part.
Did we get a separate one with the equipment?
It's typically what you have when you purchase a new ambulance.
Okay.
And it was identified by the budget workshop process.
So it's cardiac, it's a monitor?
Yes.
And it is how much?
Thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars.
Okay, and the cot costs?
Seventeen thousand, six hundred and two.
Seventeen thousand?
Six hundred and two.
Six hundred and two.
For a total of two-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
And ninety-nine cents, huh?
Forty cents, actually.
So the, uh, the command vehicle, is, is that an absolute necessity?
I would say so. As our city grows, it becomes very important, more and more important. Also, with our movement is happening, it's also gonna be used, one of our cardiac monitors that we currently have on the ambulance that we can sell, is gonna be moved over to that truck to the first response, or whether we don't have personnel for to run it.
Now, those are my questions. Councilman, my?
Yeah, the only question I had, when we have like an accident on a city by a highway, do, does your engine truck go out and block the road and that kind of stuff?
If we have personnel.
If, if you have personnel. Did we get it wrecked when you did that? Down in Dallas, they lose one every two hundred months, I bet you.
We also have a.
When, when you buy these vehicles, do they come with any kind of warranty?
Yes, sir.
Have we ever had a claim on any of those, or?
On warranties, on the current vehicles? Yes, we, numerous times have used them. Currently, all the issues, you know, the past two years, we're out of warranty, because of mileage and use on vehicles and things like that, so.
Can you buy extended warranties when you buy the vehicle, like a car, you know, like people do with the regular car?
Great question. I have never heard of it in an ambulance.
I would think they would.
I, I don't see them doing that, because it's not like purchasing, purchasing a new vehicle, because the chassis is made from, say, Dodge. So they're producing the chassis, well, then the ambulance is another manufacturer, so they all have different warranties, and those, the chassis manufacturers, it's an ambulance package, and it's, so it's pretty much as they sell it, it's, that's it. So we're not really purchasing the chassis, we're purchasing it after the ambulance manufacturer buys the chassis from somebody else.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Then at this time, is there any motion regarding this?
I make a motion that we, uh, that we awarded the bid for authorized city manager to execute a contract to purchase, uh, six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars for our fire, ambulance, command vehicle, and equipment for the fire department and the government capital corporation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I think what we need to be concerned with, in the, we're, we're taking on this extra debt, and based on the high usage, everything, I, I think what we need to, what we're gonna need to focus on is building in some, maybe some deferred maintenance that hasn't been done in the process.
Yes, sir.
And.
We had, we had increased maintenance budget in the last couple of years, to try and take care of, keep the units on the road, and keep them in a good state of repair, and steadily with mileage and wear and tear of running these rural calls, it's taking its toll on What we're concerned with, towards fifteen, anticipating all these issues, because we're gonna, you know, as you asked earlier, we're gonna have two units that are gonna be, that are gonna be keep together. The good thing is, one unit that's, that's currently in the frontline, when we move to the back line, we'll be getting longevity out of it, because we'll be making more highway calls that will be, you know, straight out, the color calls, you know, foot to floor, type use, so we're gonna, we're gonna take a good look at what our maintenance costality agrees, and look at our three and five-year average.
And I'll just place a brief.
Yes, sir. And we, we held off as, as long as we could, because we were waiting for, with the Medicare revalidation, the chief of health took the department through the working on revenue to come back, and we're seeing those numbers coming in. I have some reason for recommendation to bring it to council.
Have you had a question? Councilman, my?
I just wanted to mention that, that I think that the fire department, you know, it's very important for me, for them, to maintain good equipment, because I had to use their first a few times, and they're very professional, they, they use the equipment, they help you with your problems, and as you get older, you appreciate that more, that there's gonna be more use of them coming to your house and that kind of stuff, so. I just think they've done a great job, and I want to continue to do so, as a tip of equipment to build a deal.
Councilor, sir?
Senator, I moved it to the Medicare thing. Currently, you are behind twelve-point-three percent on your expected revenue this year, is that, is that?
It's reasonable. It, it does sound reasonable. I have gone over with city manager several times on the numbers, and for what it presents to you, yes. I have up-to-date numbers, but it does take time, just like anything, when they close out a month, it takes us two months to basically get that money into our accounts. So I have up-to-date numbers, you know, that I check and all that stuff, I do report on, but the actual numbers that are in the bank, that is correct.
Okay, the statement I'm looking at is, is March thirty-first.
Yes, sir.
End of March, and.
So we just got our February check yesterday.
So, are you, are you indicating that you will need your budget this year, because you didn't ask? Will, will all of that Medicare payments that we messed up on, will all of those be in, and will your sales be, what, what the budget says?
Like, we talked, we talked about it last meeting in, in the audit of Medicare and all that stuff, I mean, it's not uncommon for eighteen months to, that they do pay the call. So it's one of those things, we have seen an increase in revenue over the last, like, two, three months. Will I be at that number? I, what I have figured and what I, we're gonna be very close, this past two months of running just one ambulance and turning down calls every day, killed us. I mean, we probably lost fifty thousand dollars.
You said that was the last one, yeah. But you're behind a substantial amount of money at, at this point, at, at the end of six months, when you should have fifty percent of your revenue on the average, and, and you still have sixty-two-point-three percent that seems to be left.
Because basically, those numbers are what we currently have, you know, and it does take processing time to get the actual checks.
Now, you say you, you rotate one, rather than as, like one, and at the end of that year, it goes to, and I know you said keep the same numbers for frontline for a year, and then, then it goes back to.
I know, that's, that's our norm for cities and departments, they replace them every year.
So if we have three ambulances, are we going to have to find another ambulance next year for?
We need to, I would, I would strongly suggest it, yes.
Okay. And since you were way behind last year, and you're still behind this year, is that, is that a sound investment to buy something that you may or may not be able to afford? And I, and I understand the emotional sell that we have from.
But that's true, and what Billy, you know, touched on is a hundred percent. If you look at most cities' fire departments, look at how much of them are self-funded, which we have been able to maintain for many years, are being very close to, it's a remarkable thing.
Well, when you're three-hundred-thousand dollars short in your budget, you're not self-funded, sorry?
No, not currently, like I said, that money, the budget you're looking at is from, I think, that last check we had, that went in there, would be December, so that number would be a little low.
Yeah, I have, the question I have is that, it was my understanding during the budget process, that we said we were going to sell the fire truck before we even purchased the new one. Do you have a buyer?
We did, but then we pushed this back in the way and all this stuff, for reasons. I, it's out right now, I should be getting a price quote back from one manufacturer that's looking at buying it in the next three days. That is still our plan.
But we don't have a purchaser right now?
Not at this point, that I would. Not at this point, that I would accept.
And you are expecting what price for it?
I'm hoping it's six figures.
And will that come off of this $400,000 that, uh...
No, ma'am, we budgeted that for the game of sales assets.
Yeah. So then the $400,000 is not a firm figure?
Yes, it is. I don't, I don't understand exactly what you're saying.
Okay, if, if we were going to, uh, sell it and then buy?
Yes, ma'am.
We don't know what we'll sell it for, but you're saying you'll purchase for $400,000. And what is our, you know, budgeted amount there?
Well, the sale of that engine is a totally different budget item. It has nothing to do with the budgeted amount for the new engine. We budgeted that in the game of asset sales, so if we do sell it, it goes into that category, doesn't have anything to do with the new engine.
But it will affect the bottom line of the budget, though.
Of the department budget, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So are we going to be able to, you know, meet the budgeted amount? Is there anything that can assure us that we won't be behind?
No, there's nothing that will assure us. We're doing our best, the department's doing its best to make sure that we get there or get as close as possible.
Well, see, it was my understanding that we wouldn't sell until we had a purchaser.
That's right.
I mean, we wouldn't, obviously, we wouldn't. I caught it. We wouldn't buy until we knew that we were able to sell and that we wouldn't be hanging there, you hang ten.
Yes, and that's still our plan.
That's still our plan.
Originally, when we were in September, August, you know, we went through it, I got a price, a buy bid and all that stuff on Ferrari, and we were searching some different avenues on how to seek out more money. We were going through different things. Government capital is actually giving some out of state brokers and all that stuff to look at. The current engine, that means our needs, Pierce Manufacturing came out, waiting on their guy to give me a price of what they're offering to buy it for, and then we're kind of going from there because I don't want to go out and put it somewhere and then they'll come back with our acceptable number. You know, so I should be hearing back from them soon. I met with them yesterday, talked to them about it, and they said they're still working on it, trying to get all the final numbers. And then basically, if it's not acceptable, then we will accept that offer. If it's not acceptable, we'll search other avenues, start going to brokers and all that stuff to reach out and do some of our own advertising. Our intentions are still to sell that truck before, with, with the point that they don't take ownership of it until we receive our new truck.
And how long does it take to get a new truck?
With Pierce Manufacturing, the truck that we're currently looking at is, could be delivered in the middle of May.
Okay, so there's not a long delay then?
Um, there's, there's really not. Depends on what they have at that time. If they sold out of those trucks and only had the high end trucks, then we might have to wait a little longer, but as of yesterday, that was their timeline.
I'm not going to bind up the trade chain.
And we're not going to have it paid off before we purchase the new one?
I would like to, yes.
Uh, I, I missed the timeline there, but, okay. The ambulance with all the necessary things, which I caught cardiac monitor and the ambulance itself, that comes to about $234,000, is that about what you're talking about? I could see purchasing that, but not going along with the, the command car. And, uh, the other, I guess the final question that I have is on the fire truck, and can the current one that we're using last us another year or two?
I would say no.
On what grounds or for what reason?
Well, I mean, will it be able to drive in a year? Sure. Do we know if the pump's going to completely fail in a year? When somebody's house is catching on fire and pull up and turn the pump on and it doesn't work? Are it pumps 200 gallons a minute instead of 1,250? Can't say exactly when it's going to happen. So I strongly would recommend purchasing a new piece of the book.
So if we sell it, someone else will have that problem, huh?
You know, that's up to them, is buying a new vehicle. You know, the manufacturers, you know, will go through it, will do what they can, and it's pump tested and certified, which it has to be yearly according to the state, so they will get what it pumped at this last pump test in October.
And that was?
Nine hundred.
Nine hundred?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Which is a F, which is a fail. But you went over the budget, that was why I recommended.
Okay, we have had a discussion. Councilman Flick?
I wanted to offer, to Councilman Karen, from what I've heard here, the financing of the new truck is not contingent upon the trade.
It's not?
It's based on the new truck. So if the truck, I haven't seen it on the, on the books, I don't know if it's fully depreciated, partially depreciated, but if the value that you receive exceeds what you have on the books, that's the gain on sale that he's talking about, gain on the sale, they have to go into the fine, the ambulance fire truck fine to determine the department's profitability. Therefore, that's what he was saying, there were two separate things.
Right.
Okay, I'll just clarify that for anybody that I need to... Is that right? Correct me if I'm wrong.
We have a motion by Billy Floyd, second by Russell Bower, to award a bid and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. We have three in favor, two opposed. Motion passed. The next item is consider and take any action necessary regarding adopting resolutions to enter into financial agreements for the acquisition of a fire, ambulance, command vehicle, and equipment for the fire department. Is there any discussion regarding this at this time? Is there a motion?
Uh, yes, I would like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution to enter into a financial agreement for the acquisition of fire, ambulance, car, and command vehicle for fire EMS department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion regarding this? All of those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Three in favor, two opposed. Motion passed.
Mayor, can I have a second?
Yes.
Is there an equal, okay, so that's for the six, okay. Okay, I was thinking it didn't include the fire truck for some reason.
No, it includes the firing.
Yeah, okay, okay. I didn't see it listed anywhere there.
It's in number 11. Number 12, consider and take any action necessary regarding passage of an ordinance repealing ordinance number 707 in order to amend the amounts of credit to the utility bills. Is there any discussion regarding this? Councilman Floyd?
Uh, yes, there is. I just wanted to, uh, I, okay, is this revealing and coming up with a new suggestion or what exactly? Let me make sure I'm not talking on the wrong thing.
The motion, last meeting, was for y'all see a comparison side by side.
Okay.
Um, that's, that's what was built into the spreadsheet.
Okay.
Uh, the front page, the refund summary has the refund proposal, proposed by Councilman Jasko, what the committee came up with, the council appointed the hybrid, and then what the difference was between 13 and 14.
So is the sheet that we have that said water fund summary, is the 2013, 14, that's the one we have, I mean, that's the real numbers, right?
Yes, sir.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, because that's, I went back with mine up and that's exactly what, the amount I would get refunded is exactly how much, well, exactly two cents off, but, you know, the two cents are being exactly what I should have gotten back, okay? And so, and then we're going to decide which one of these plans we would like to go with as actually accurate, that's all I have, then, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Bower?
No questions.
Councilman Jasko?
If everybody's clear on what Billy said, that's what I was going to offer with this third proposal, was we were charged with coming back with the, to, to come up with a proposal that applied to the net change as a result of the increased rates for the time period of the retroactive bills. And that's what this represents, to compare with the first week. And reset, please.
The true, the true comparison?
Yes, sir.
And that would be the rate affected to the October 1st, Billy, in consideration of consumption, second rate?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Smith?
Councilman Tom?
I'm impressed with the work that was done on it and I think it's great.
And if there's no further discussion, is there a motion regarding this?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve going with the rate to return the money from the comparison billing from the 2013, 2014 numbers. You know, we use those as the amount of refunds.
Is there a second?
Yes, ma'am, one second.
Mayor, if I may, if you're going to change, is, is that motion a change in what was approved before? If it is, then the motion should actually be to adopt this new ordinance with those refund amounts attached to the ordinance as the exit date.
Okay. It needs to be done by ordinance. Councilman Floyd, would you like to...
I like to change by the same, as you said. That's my honest opinion, but if I get my $50 back, I don't think...
Okay, this is going to make a motion to adopt this. I mean, with, to put it very simply, it will be the second, exact amount.
Yes, ma'am.
And the second is by Councilman Jasko?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any further discussion?
I'm just curious that you're not a favorite of your own number.
The first one?
The very first one.
Yeah.
It's because, is, uh, that number was, was not what I thought it was. The first number was actually a change in the...
On the ones that we have right here that were choosing, which one? Your plan was the one from last month, what you're saying?
No, mine was the very first one, the one that I was given, the net change in the bills on. That's what I was going off of. It didn't take into consideration these components here showing the old rate on the October 1st reading and the new rate at the October 1st reading, the difference being the amount of the refund, which, the difference was the amount of overcharge, which is also the amount of the refund. That's not what was in the first number, that's what I thought was in the first number, but it was not, I definitely looked at.
Okay, so your, the plan that you are supporting by your, obviously by your second, is a 13, 14.
Yes, sir.
And that is, that is to refund all the trucks?
Yes, sir.
Or it's not something like it?
That's correct. That's not a flat fee, but the flat fee for refund was the second one in that group that is referred to as the committee. That was a, that was a, a fee that was going to be refunded based on the size of the meter as opposed to the actual usage. So this one, this one replaced the actual usage and the overcharge on that usage.
And the actual amount?
Yes, ma'am, any actual amount.
I'm fine with that, but where, where did the hybrid come from? We only had three, you know, this time.
The hybrid was last, last month's.
Then Robert and the, and they came up with it. And one was in between.
Well, I thought, you know, we were talking about three plans and all of a sudden I see four and...
Okay, can I clarify?
Yeah, please.
Okay, the three plans, the, the first one that we voted on was, was, was my plan over the committee's plan.
Yeah.
So the committee's plan is really out, it's just here for comparison.
I see.
Okay, the, the first one that was approved was the one with my name on it. The one we brought last month was the hybrid that was an attempt to reconcile mine to the, it was, it was a hybrid between mine and the committee's, which wasn't entirely right because it wasn't the exact overcharge.
Okay.
Okay, so this one that we have here is the exact overcharge.
Well, I just wasn't familiar with the hybrid. I didn't know where that...
That was, that was the one that, that we looked at last month.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Billy Floyd, second by Robert Jasko. Is there any further discussion? All of us in favor, please raise your hand. It is pronounced, motion passed.
Do we have a time?
Uh, the question has been asked, do we have a time for trying to own that?
Since it's just a count by count, it's going to take about a month.
A couple of minutes. Starting when?
Starting immediately.
Start immediately.
This will be the, may, may Bill?
We'll just go down the line, so if you have a credit, you're welcome to call and ask why, and that'll probably be it.
Okay.
If you don't, it's coming.
Okay. Okay. Item 13, consider and take any action necessary regarding a request by Frank Walker, Juan Frango, and Tan Hagley to abandon the alley in block 15 of the original town plant at the intersection of East Jefferson Street, which is marked at 121 and Sherman Street. Is there any discussion regarding this? I'll start. Would you, Councilman Tom?
Uh, my only question again is, under the recommendation, it says staff, and I would like accountability and I'd like to know who.
It says right there, if you keep reading all the way down to your agenda item towards the bottom, recommendation staff, staff members are identified at the bottom of your agenda item as it is on all the rest of them. Department head authorization is Jennifer Gould, city clerk, approved for council consideration, Frank Baker, city manager. Those are the staff members.
Okay, so in the future, would you please list names there so that we know?
Mayhem identifies us at the bottom.
Yeah.
When it says staff recommendation, just like if you go back to previous one, it'll say Steve White, the public works, it'll say Landon Smith, the fire chief, then you know what the agenda item, it identifies the staff members at the base.
Okay. Are there any other questions regarding this? Councilman Smith? Councilman Jasko?
Uh, yes, I had, I just have one question about clarification from the man here, someone, I'm assuming it's this area right here, it's bold.
Yes, sir. It was blocked out, once it got the hash mark stood, maybe he'll, uh, we're ordering 11, 12, and 17 and 18.
Okay, what about the amount that's in that, that alleyway right there?
That's going to be landlocked, is that correct, Jennifer?
Um, I, if I remember correctly, we've seen this similar map for several, several meetings, and I think this was the last piece of that L-shaped alleyway that needed to be abandoned. So I believe that with this, that entire alleyway, the L of that alleyway will be abandoned.
That's going from left to right. That, that will amount the danger of this, the portion around there, it's going to have to, is what they choose to, is what they're asking for.
Okay.
What we had previously is we had, we'd had a portion of landlocked, this is already picked up, this is already picked up, and this as well, and so that was one complete piece.
So who's actually, who's actually the property owner of that part?
That's the city's, that's the city's current owner, so that would be, that would be picked up by the gentleman.
Frank Walker.
Frank Walker, taken. Juan Fraga.
So the entire mall is going to be picked up now?
Yes, sir.
And just so you know, if there happened to be any utilities in there, the ordinance of banning the ownership reserves a utility, isn't it?
Okay. Happy.
Thank you. Councilman Tom.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Councilman Mike.
Yeah, fuck it, we have an item in agenda thirteen which talks about this property, then we have a giant agenda fourteen which talks about the same property, right?
Thirteen is just regarding their requests, their petition requesting the abandonment, and then fourteen would adopt the ordinance that officially abandons the alleyway, and then we file it with the county so that it can be added to the property owners.
Okay.
So the first motion would be to accept this request, right? And then the next one would be to overturn the ordinance. So is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I, for clarification, now, do I remember that last month they, it was said that the people didn't want to accept the, that portion of the alleyway, and they've changed their mind, or what?
I, I remember said that it'd be tabled, because Dr. Julie, I asked Julie to look at it, she advised that we needed an additional petition from Mr. Fraga, which hadn't been provided yet at the time that we met last.
So he is accepting his portion, where before?
Well, they, the adjacent property owners are willing to, I guess, allow it to be abandoned, but Mr. Walker will take in the property.
Oh, okay, he's taking in all of the property, yes, okay, good.
At this time, is there a motion accepting this request?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Another discussion? We have a motion by Councilman Moore, seconded by Councilman Smith. All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous, motion passed. Fourteen, consider taking the action necessary regarding approval of ordinance to abandon an alleyway in block fifteen of the original town plant at the intersection of East Jefferson Street, marked at one twenty-one, and Sherman Street requested by Frank Walker, Juan Fraga, and Ted Agle. This is a motion for approving the ordinance to abandon it. Are there any questions regarding this, Councilman Plight?
No.
Councilman Moore, Councilman Jaska, Councilman Smith, Councilman O'Beirson. And then at this time, is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Second.
Is there a second? We have a motion by Councilman Smith to approve the ordinance, seconded by Councilman Jaska, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous, motion passed. Number fifteen, discussion regarding facility usage fees proposed by the Park and Recreation Board. I have a request here by Vicky Kipit for April Butler, who wishes to address this regarding the parks board, skip it.
Yes, ma'am, I have a short statement to the president of the Parks Board, she was unable to attend tonight. The Parks Board is hoping to have a park fee structure ready for city council to review at next month's meeting. Now that that's seconded and made for the board to leave, we are comparing surrounding cities fee structures and gathering information and input from individuals and groups that have an interest. We expect to have a final fee structure created on our next meeting, which is the last Thursday of this month, so we'll have it available for the city council.
Thank you. At this time, is there a motion that this be tabled for thirty days? As far as the discussion? Oh, okay, then I do not need a motion to table this? Very well, thank you. Next, number sixteen, consider taking the action necessary pursuant to an agenda request submitted by John Jennings regarding implementation of a policy for city council agenda items submission. This was submitted in October, I believe. We have two items here that are very, very close in similarity, the other one is been made by Billy Plight. If we wish to go to the next one, I will ask for a motion on this item. Since it was tabled before, then it has to be put back on the agenda. So if there is no motion, then we will go to number seventeen, which, the one by Billy Plight. Is there a motion on item number sixteen?
To skip it, does that link the motion to be?
If there is no motion, you guys, then we go to next. Second call for a motion. Third and final call. Item sixteen is due to the lack of a motion. We will go to item seventeen. Consider taking the action necessary pursuant to an agenda request submitted by Billy Plight regarding implementation of a procedure for city council leading agenda items and district future of review packets. This is implementation of a policy for city council agenda items that were required, agenda requests to be due five days earlier than they are presently requested for, and I will let Mr. Plight explain this.
Okay, basically what I'm asking for here is a, a written down procedure that can be used by to, to, I, I have a feeling that as we, that the agenda is not always getting enough time to get properly taken care of, so therefore I would like to have the agenda turned in earlier to the, and then the mayor would have longer time to review it, the city itself would have longer time to review it, could provide more information about giving us advice on what we should do, and at the same time, I would like to add, the difference between mine and what John had said was that there would be on Thursday evening, a preliminary agenda would be emailed to all council members and mayor for review of possible omissions or errors, any corrections should be provided by city back by noon Friday. That would be mainly just if, if we looked through it and saw, well, this would be better if the order was up here with the other part that, you know, was, or, or something just got missing, or something like that, and if an agenda item that was delayed from the last one and didn't get back on the agenda item, you know, you would, you'd probably know about it, that kind of stuff, so it'd just be an assistance, it wouldn't be anything that any council member or mayor would have to reply to, or, or give any information that they didn't want to, it'd just give them a heads up as what is, as what is coming. And it wouldn't be a full presentation, it would just be like our agenda sheet saying what the items are, just a practice version of it. And, and you would, by issuing the, requesting an agenda be done earlier, by doing, by doing on the, the Friday before the end of the month, which works out to, on most cases, it's a, it's a five to five day difference in, in what, and when the agenda item has to be turned in. If there's an emergency agenda item that's brought forth, it's something that the city has determined needs to happen, or the mayor that determines needs to happen, or three councilmen, I think is what it takes, determine needs to happen, then that could be added to the agenda, you know, even after it first got to the thing, by, by request. But I don't see the problem, most agenda items could be received in plenty of time to be able to get this done. And it would make things just more stable, and more, more, more accurate, and more, you know, and that kind of stuff.
Okay, and you have any comments, Councilman Moore?
I think it's good to allow the mayor and city management to have a proper amount of time to get the stuff put together. I know they scramble sometimes when they get agendas on Friday, so I, I think this is a good, a good step.
Councilman Jaska?
I would agree with, with that, but I also have a concern that in the example that was in the email, that there was an agenda submitted in the example used Friday, December twenty-seventh, for the January fourteenth council meeting. If you didn't get it there by the twenty-seventh, if somebody requested something on the twenty-eighth, they're going to be waiting forty-five days, which is going to be the council meeting in the next month. But I believe that you consider.
Are you talking about the one that John did, or are you talking about that question?
Yeah, I was using, I was using that as the, if you're, if you're going to push it back another five days after his, it's going to, I mean, if you miss the deadline, and you have a request that you're going to have the time between that time and the council meeting, which is ten, fifteen days, plus thirty more days for the next meeting.
Which if you did it the other way, you'd still have five days difference, you'd have forty days instead of forty-five, so you still have a big way if you miss one of them.
Okay, I mean, that, that just seems, that just seems to me that that's slowing down progress instead of speeding it up, but that's just my opinion.
Okay, Councilman Smith?
I think at the very beginning, I think it makes the city less responsive to the citizens, I think they, the citizens need to be, to be respected in the fact that if they have an issue that they need on the agenda, there's going to be a scramble no matter what timeframe you have, whether it's the Wednesday of noon before, or the Wednesday of two weeks before, it's still going to be a scramble instead of on, on Friday. That's not going to be, that's not going to change anything. It will make the city less responsive to its citizens for that, for that reason.
I don't see a need to change anything, it's been working fine, and if it's not broken, I think we should not have to fix it. And if there is fixed, then I would certainly request that we get our packets more than Friday after six o'clock or six P.M. Friday for the regular Monday or Tuesday meeting, whichever it may be, so that we have time as council members to review it then too. So if there's one change, then there should be the other change, but I do not recommend changing the system that we currently have.
Should I talk again?
As a. Can I say two?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, since I'm the one that the agenda is set to, I don't really see our present agenda as the problem. I see it more as a management problem than an agenda problem. We're talking, your proposal is eleven days before the council meeting instead of five. As to the agenda, I have to make some changes, but I believe that making eleven days punishes the citizens, and I don't, I don't think that is it. If you will look at the agendas that we have had, I have requested the name of the person making the agenda request always be listed on the agenda. When I get the agenda, I don't have the packet and the information, so I look at it as the other citizens look at it. And I want to know who put that on the agenda, and I don't want a generic agenda, I want everyone to know what that is about, not, let's change this ordinance number so and so, well, I want to know why. I don't want to go and say, well, we have a change here, and it's in the McKinney Plant, section number three, block three, I want a street address on it. When you're making, these brief explanations should be on it, because they don't have those information packets. I have also asked that the minutes of the meetings should be sent to the mayor and council the following week after a council meeting, because at that time, it's still fresh on our minds, we can correct the minutes, and it would be much better if we did that. This month, I got the draft agenda, the only two items that we have on it tonight that are not on the original draft agenda, which I brought, was, was yours, Mr. Plight, and the fire department. I have noticed that I did, I have sent an email to, to Ann that read, the mayor asked that once I add the fire department financing in Billy Plight's agenda item, that it be resent to her email, so that I requested that it be sent back again. Also, I think that what we've got is very beneficial, I am not in favor of changing it. These are that the request must be resubmitted no later than noon on the Wednesday prior to the regular council meeting. Agenda items for special meetings must be submitted to the city clerk five days prior to the meeting. I submitted my request for the changes on the minute on Wednesday, but they were not made. All requests must be specifically worded and have all accompanying paperwork attached. I think that we really need to keep what we've got, but I think that we need to enforce it, because we're putting things on the agenda that we don't have the background material for, that it's not ready for the agenda. For instance, I think about the Parks Department, three times it has been on the agenda and in the package, was not the background information. One time we were given the information, and Jennifer will verify this, we were given the information at council meeting. This was put on the agenda, and we're not ready. I am in favor of enforcing the request items that we have now, instead of changing, let's do what we say we're going to do and keep this enforced, that's my opinion.
Now, any questions, then?
Yes.
Okay, back to the mayor. What, okay, by the Wednesday before the next Tuesday, you get, is that one of all the information is delivered to you by noon that day? Or it has to be turned into the, it has to be turned into the city by noon that day?
Yes.
So when do you actually get?
I, I get a, I know, I actually get the packet the same time you did.
Okay, but I mean, I mean, what do you get at that point? You get an agenda that's had some items on it already?
I get a, what is called a, just a minute, a draft agenda as we go along. So I already have a draft agenda before that Wednesday comes, so there, a lot of these things can already be done, especially the things that are in-house, and if you'll notice on our, our agenda, the majority of the things are in-house, and by in-house, I mean by our boards and staff and this sort of thing. I think on this agenda, I didn't count, but I think there's only like three that are from other than.
Okay, like Palladium, when they came here, that would be something to be out of house.
Out of house, yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, and you, okay, so you get it by Wednesday sometime, or Wednesday?
When, usually, I, I have a draft agenda before then.
Okay.
Jennifer usually sends me that draft agenda early.
Okay, okay.
But it is a definite one after, after that Wednesday, with any update to that. So we have had that much time already to get all the background, the percentage of the, everything, and the agenda can be, could be sent. We don't need to change this, but I have no objections to the agenda being sent to the council also, but with the understanding that you get a draft agenda, so you know what's coming. But I also want more things on the agenda, so that when you get it, you're looking at it as the citizens look at it, and because you don't get a packet, I don't get a packet till Friday.
Yeah, we sometimes have to go to the packet to determine what.
Determine what.
What I'm actually doing.
You know, some people do too. You know, some people do too.
Yeah.
So that really needs to be done.
I understand that part.
That part I would really like to see done, but I think that has to do with management and not the council.
Right, okay. Then, when do you return the pack, the final agenda? Or is that the final agenda that you return back to the city manager or city secretary?
I send it back to the city manager.
Okay, when do you return that to him? Is it an email or is it a?
It's an email.
Okay. And when?
So I, I email my changes if there are changes.
Okay.
And send it back.
Okay, so is that the current Thursday or Tuesday?
The only time she emails back is if you're dying changes. But you're working in, what you want to change typically typed?
Well, yes. If there's.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that one.
Just brought in, if there's changes, she'll bring them in time. She'll drop them off and say, oh.
Oh, okay.
If she doesn't have any changes, she'll email back, I have any changes.
Okay, okay. And, and you don't add anything at that point to the agenda or anything else other than you have, you might add something to the packet in the way of information?
No.
It's just like this week, talked to the mayor, sent her the draft agenda. Told her it isn't on there yet. We're waiting to get everything back from Government Capital and Fire Department in.
Okay.
When we get that, it'll be on the agenda if we can get it in in time.
Okay.
Maybe one other thing. So, oh, your request. So the main thing was, I told her about it. She said, that's fine. And so.
Send me a copy when you have.
Okay.
So we work together on the agenda and getting it out.
Okay, so when does it get back to city? I was just asking on general.
Usually, I try to do it the next day, no later than the next day.
So Thursday?
Uh huh.
Okay, does that give you?
If there, if, if there's no changes on the other sheet, I'll let her know then
Okay.
that I have no changes. So that could be on Monday, but then there could be additions that come.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So because she does do, she does the draft agenda and the draft minutes.
Okay.
But now the minutes all go out. The agenda can too.
So is that enough, is that enough time?
Depending on what staff, what material staff's trying to put together. And of course, it's not, you know, we don't have contract legal in-house. We don't have contract engineering in-house. I mean, we're working with Government Capital. I mean, we're trying to coordinate and make sure that we've got all the documents necessary.
Okay. When you sent her the preliminary agenda, okay, do, do you have the ability then to go ahead and attack park and start gathering together all that information?
If it's about.
Because you assume, your assumption is that that item's going to make the agenda because it was on there when it went.
Unless it's something like, you know, we're, we've got your agenda request to put on. We've got the fire department's deal. If we hadn't gotten, if we hadn't gotten the packet, package together, not just what Government Capital's going to submit, but, I mean, he's still refining numbers, trying to make sure that the citizens get the most bang for their buck. So what all we're working on putting together, if we have that information, it's going to make the agenda. And we did get it in time, and so he was able to articulate it.
Okay. Do you see, personally, do you see any advantage going through this procedure for your department? Does it make any, are, do you think everything's going okay, so it doesn't need anything like that?
Anything that's, you know, anything that's going to define our times and what we're responsible for is going to be beneficial.
Okay. Is, is these numbers too far out?
No, I mean.
Do you, do you, do you usually get most of your requests for, to add it to the agenda? They usually come in late?
No, they'll come in right, right at time. I mean, if we get, if we get a citizen.
So the people seem to know the time. They seem to be able to handle the time.
If they know the time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like, I mean, you dropped yours off right before noon on those days, so I mean.
If you would have known it would have been in the brief this week at that time, you'd have probably still got yours in, right? Probably. If it meant that.
No, because I wouldn't have.
Thought it by then?
Known by then that it would go forward.
Okay.
Okay, is there any further discussion regarding this? Is there a motion regarding this? I move that we not accept the change to procedures. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I didn't have a question. Will we give it not to accept? Will we maybe decline it to the point where it's? Was it her?
The motion is to not accept this, so it will stay as, as. As procedures are.
Okay, okay, just clarify.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. Three. Opposed? Two. The motion to not accept has passed. Next, we have. Consider it take any action necessary regarding passage of an ordinance, ordinance to stab and deregulate for double fencing and fencing standards. This was submitted by Billy Plank. Billy, since you want to.
This one keeps going back and forth.
Since October. Since October.
And I know that, I, I know that, you know, the opinion of some of the people on the council is that it shouldn't. You know, that, that they don't want to regulate something that they don't feel like needs to be regulated as far as housing that, that isn't in the new neighborhood, and therefore the people should be able to put a fence in any way they want to and should negotiate with their neighbor about how to do it. We don't have that same option in the neighborhood I live in, and I've, I've talked, from what I understand, this was originally supposed to be brought back to the Park Board, I mean, I forget that.
PNC.
The PNC, and, and they can come forward with a recommendation of how to add it to the rules and regulations of the neighborhood rather than the whole city. But I, I think our lawyer determined that that couldn't be done because you couldn't, you couldn't put regulations on a planned development unless the people from the planned development agreed to. So you basically have to be telling, you know, Dr. Horton that, I, you know, we want to do this and to stop you from doing something, would you please vote for it and, and go change the rules? You know, and that kind of stuff, and that, that. Also, my other idea is that this doesn't, isn't just good for our neighborhood. There are people that move in and build new houses in neighborhoods inside the rest of the city, and they want to build, I, I went and counted three that, you know, this is just ones I had seen that were going up. And they put up board fences and they put them up, you know, around their property line, which if the other person would have had a board fence, I'm sure they would have negotiated, maybe. They might not have liked each other, but they've negotiated it all. So you don't really know whether they do any good or, or bad or whatever. I don't think that asking people not to put up dual fencing is a, is a bad thing. It hurts anybody. It's good for the city. It's good for keeping down the, the problem with brush and stuff, the swing fences, and, and the problems that will occur from that. I, I, I have no problem with if, if, no, no matter what ordinance we write, if two neighbors came along and said, well, we don't want to agree with that ordinance. I think the madam mayor has a dual fence between her and her next door neighbor.
I do.
If, if they were rebuilding that fence now, and she wanted to go to her neighbor and he said, I don't care how you build it, and you said, you know, that I want to build it this way. I don't see the, for any problem with you coming forward with the planning zoning or to come forward to the, to the city council and say, we both agreed on this. Is it okay if we do it this way? I'm sure the council would go over again and say, why are we getting involved in this? You go do it whatever way you want to. If nobody's going to complain, we're not the problem. So I don't think we would be hurting people who really wanted to, to do something like that, that wanted to build a double fence between the two of them. But I think it is very important for those who have had a problem with it in the neighborhood where it's at and will in the future in other neighborhoods that it's at. So therefore, I'm recommending that we pass, go back and pass the ordinance where there is a permit required. I don't have, to, to build a fence, you know, over seven, I mean, eight foot or above. I don't have any problem with saying that the, you know, building fee to do that is zero, and therefore all it is is make sure that people can come in and get the information and know what's going on. You know, I don't have any problem with that. I, I just want to make sure that we have some sort of regulations on the books to keep Dr. Horton from doing that in the future. Thank you.
Councilman Moore, you got any comments?
No.
Councilman Jessica.
Well, the only, the only problem I have, Billy's touched on, please, and we've talked about it before. I mean, it, there, there is a specific law that says we cannot differentiate between a development like Georgetown and the Old Town overlay.
Okay.
I mean, is that right or not?
I.
Can we, can we differentiate between that?
Well, the Old Town overlay is a district contained within the city's comprehensive zoning ordinance, and you can amend the comprehensive zoning ordinance just as a, a text amendment where you're going to change the regulations for that district. Another type of district is what's called a planned development. And Georgetown is a planned development, and that is where a specific zoning scheme is adopted for a particular area. So just a straight, like, single-family straight zoning didn't work for the property. A single-family being another category in the zoning ordinance. So instead of being zoned single-family, they did a PD and did some different things. Well, the PD would have to be amended, which requires notice to all the property owners who own property within the PD, because that is specific to those properties versus, versus being a text amendment to the comprehensive zoning ordinance, which governs the whole city. So you could have it not be in zoning at all and be a standalone ordinance, which is what this is. But then you can't, you can't say, well, we're going to adopt the ordinance and apply it to half the city. If you did zoning, you could, you could put it in the comprehensive zoning ordinance and say which zoning categories the rule applies to, but you can't capture a PD that way because it's its own separate thing with, with separate rules.
Can you say any PD as opposed to the Old Town overlay?
No, because that's exactly, a PD is always specific to.
To itself.
The property, yeah.
Well, my concern is, and, and I've had people talk to me about it, if, for example, in the Old Town overlay, you've got a variety of fences or you have no fences. An example would be if someone had a picket fence around their house. Somebody buys the house adjacent to it, they want to put a six-foot privacy fence there, okay? If you don't have to be double fencing ordinance, you're either going to have to tear down the picket fence that's common between them, or you're not going to have a privacy fence on that side. So the double fence, you would have to have a double fence in that case because one wants the privacy fence, one wants to keep the picket fence.
Right.
Or a chain link fence or some other type of fence. That's why I didn't want to vote on an ordinance to say you can't have a double fence that would affect that. So, I mean, is there any way around that?
In this ordinance, it does state that if you have a fence, and you can break me if I'm wrong, but there must be three feet. If you come, if, if I have my property here and I have a fence, and that fence is on the property line, then the next guy buys a lot behind me and he wants to put up a different kind of fence, then he must lose, according to this ordinance, three feet of his property. That fence cannot be put closer to that fence than three feet. It doesn't say who's responsible for. I guess he has to put up a gate because he's responsible for mowing it, and he loses three feet of property with this fence, right?
That's right. The, the distance is to allow enough space for a lawnmower or to fit through or some type of equipment versus if you just have four, six inches, you know, a much smaller amount, how are you going to chop the weeds and keep it low or get the trash out or?
Are you going to?
Paint or stain one side.
Alley between it. And, and, and I really didn't, I'm sorry, go ahead. I really didn't understand the fact that, what if I put my fence one foot inside the property line? Is, is it's just, do I lose a foot and he loses two or?
Yeah, you would think so. He only has to be three foot from the fence, not from the property.
Three foot from the fence, but not the property line.
But then who would be responsible for anything then?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Then it gets real difficult.
It's, it would really get difficult. You know, if I've got a foot of it and you've got two feet of it, I don't want to mow my foot and you have your two feet.
How do you, your, your fences aren't next to each other, is it?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
But, but they are not solid fences, therefore on the, I, I do have double fencing at my house, and it was something that we agreed on because of the privacy issue. And her fence was chain link, mine is stockade. But because it is a chain link fence, we simply spray the weeds in between, and there is no brook between them, even though there's a very short distance between there. Once it stopped her dog from getting out.
Alter your mode there.
Not really, not really, but, you know, a, a lot of it depends on the type of fence. But to lose a lot of property owners who might want, they may want a fence, but they don't want to lose three feet of their property all the way across because I, I don't know how, how to love. Did that answer, do you have any more questions, Councilman Jessica?
No, my, my question was for council. If there was any way to differentiate between the two. I mean, it seems to me you've got, you've got a planned development, and everything's supposed to be uniform within the planned development. So, I mean, I would think that there's some kind of logical, legal, well, no, maybe not, that, that would say any planned development, you could say any planned development, which would exclude the Old Town overlay, and say, okay, it's going to be uniform, and then we can put an ordinance there that would prevent it in the planned developments.
The, the way it could be done is the city can initiate a zoning change that would be in the form of an amendment to the planned development ordinance. It does not have to be initiated upon the application of an owner of property. Cities can initiate changes in zoning. So the city could initiate an amendment to the PD that is for Georgetown. You know, you may have D.R. Horton's representatives showing up at PNC and at council opposed to it because both bodies will have to have public hearings before voting on whether to do the amendment. But it is, it could be done without their consent if, if there were enough votes to make the change. And the homeowners, the people who live there, could also speak at the public hearing, ask of anybody in the city, you know, whether they live there or not. The public hearing should be open to anybody.
So there, there is an alternative. We could bring something back that would.
Initiate an application. Initiate an amendment to the planned development.
So, so effectively, we could overrule the planned development if we can't vote. Is that what you're, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
We can, if we initiate it, we can overrule the planned development?
Yes.
I think that's what.
You can amend it.
And then initiate an amendment to the planned development. Okay, did that answer your question? Councilman Jessica?
Yes. Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Julie, what would it, it would take the city initiating the, the action?
Yes, and you, you would have to mail a notice of the public hearing to each owner of property within the PD, and then all property within 200 feet of the perimeter of the PD, and notice would also go, of the public hearing would also go in the newspaper, so that everybody is aware of-
If this action passes, then future planned developments will have to adhere to that, right?
No, if you did another planned development in the future, then that planned development could specifically include the same regulation. Like, an example, they're not gonna need it, like Palladium, when their zoning case comes through, it's going to be a planned development, because you're not gonna do just straight apartment zoning, because they said they're gonna do all these extra things, and so to hold them to that, you include the extra things as part of the zoning. Theirs is a really gonna involve fencing, but whenever someone comes saying, "I want planned development for a single-family neighborhood," it's gonna be because they're doing something different or extra that is beyond the minimum that's in the zoning ordinance. So you could include the double fencing issue in any future-
So it, it would be automatically included in that, and, but-
Well, I mean, it's staff, you know, I could know, and staff could know, that anytime someone applies for a residential PD, that that's something that needs to be put in.
Okay, but it, it could easily be put in at that point?
Yes, yes.
I, I just think it's wrong for the city to, to tell the people that have lived here off generations what they can do, can't do, you know, the less government we can do, I'll steal-
You can, you can steal that.
Less government control.
Yeah, uh, last time we discussed the fencing, we had two proposals. One was for fences that were six foot or taller. Uh, you had to have a permit, and one was that you did not have to have a permit. And in here, it looks like it's saying that no matter what, you need to, need a permit. And I, you know, my personal preference is if it's six foot or taller, uh, then you have to a, a request, unless we don't require a request.
Yeah, well, the, uh, if you want it six foot or taller, the ordinance sits in front of you, where it says more than 18 inches, it could be changed to say more than six feet.
Okay, that would be-
Where is that?
That's in section, paragraph 2.1.
So it would be-
Instead of 18 inches, it would be six foot.
More than six feet. So you could still have the six foot, but not anything higher than that.
Right, more than six foot, okay. That was my main concern there, because I, you know, we had the two before, and all of a sudden, there's only one, and I like the six foot.
Karen?
Yes?
Would it be okay to have, the, the idea, though, that you didn't have a permit, but that there isn't a fee for the permit?
Now, I'm even seeing-
I, I mean, this, I, I'm only saying, because that way, if you had to apply for a permit, then you'd end up knowing the rules about what a double fence is. That's the only way you're gonna get the people to know in advance what, before they go build one. Because if, if people know that they don't have to have a permit to do anything on a six-foot fence, I'm not gonna go to the city and find out what the rules are for a six-foot fence. I'm gonna go build a six-foot fence.
Okay, then including their, uh, fence permits, no fee?
Yeah, I'd, I'd be happy with that. That would come, oh, no, we can't do that.
If they could, building code already requires permits for fences when they're over six feet tall.
Oh, okay.
So this wouldn't be a new requirement to get the permit. If, if it had been 18 inches, that would be a new requirement, because things under six feet do not require a permit under the, under the building code.
Okay.
Well, we, we, just to clarify, ours, our zoning ordinance does have requirements for where your fence can and cannot be. I don't, I, I don't think that we can ask someone to get a permit and not pay for it, because we have to pay, the city has to pay Bureau Veritas to review and inspect. So, I mean, they can obtain the rules, but there will be no enforcement of the rules, basically. So, a fence can go up wherever the person paying for it desires, desires for it to go up. And then if it, if the neighbor disagrees, or believes that it's on their property line, it would become a civil, where neighbors are suing each other.
But right now, people are paying for fence permits, if they're over the six feet.
That, that answers my question, yes.
I have, I have a question.
If we make that change.
For six foot? I have, I have a question on the penalty for violations. Fourth line, damn, for anything in violation of this ordinance shall be placed, or shall exist. I, shall exist. We have things that are already existing. Uh, I don't see that there should be a penalty for something that is already, that already exists. And you can't go say, "All right, we passed an ordinance against this, tear your fence down." So you've got this shall, shall exist in here. And I- Do you see what I'm talking about?
Yes, yes.
Shall be placed, or shall exist.
I, I think it would be fine to strike "or shall exist." Um, that was, that was really to catch someone who builds after the ordinance, and then the city figures out later it's existing, but it's-
But it's a catch-all.
Yes, but it, it's okay to strike it. Ones that are existing right now, they're going to be grandfathered. Unless there's some other reason, like it's dilapidated, or, you know, dangerous, or some other enforcement provision, but saying you have to remove it because it's a double fence won't be able to happen for those that are-
But it does say that, so we can strike "or shall exist." Because we couldn't go back to Georgetown and say, "There it is then, we don't..." But that, we can strike that. Wouldn't that be agreeable?
So, Karen, were you saying, strike the, the 18 inches, or?
Yeah.
Change the 18 inches to-
To more than six foot.
To 60 inches?
More than six foot.
Seventy two.
Than six foot.
Get it. All five of you. Seventy three inches, how's that?
Okay, uh, we've had discussion. Uh, is there a motion regarding this at this time?
I make a motion with the exception of the ordinance for fencing, based on two changes of the fence definition, being 73 inches instead of 18 inches, and the words being struck out of the penalty for violations of "or shall exist," or, yeah, "shall." And removing it over.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Okay, just one second. Y'all are saying that a fence is defined as anything over 73 inches?
Yeah.
Okay, then this 36-inch distance isn't gonna apply, period, unless somebody builds over a six-foot fence. So there's gonna continue to be double fencing in Georgetown. That does make it those ordinance.
Well, the only other thing I see is to initiate an amendment to the planned development.
If the building code already, already has anything over six foot, okay.
And I don't know if the building code says over six foot, or six foot or more.
Okay, but, what we're getting at is, if, if a fence is defined as anything 72, over 72 inches,
You're right.
No fence should be built alongside or parallel to existing fence, unless there's 30, at least 36 inches. I mean, this is, it's gonna keep, the, the issue's gonna persist, and we brought that back in, back in October.
I understand, I understand.
Okay, with that, with that information, do you withdraw your original?
I would draw my original. Change 73 back to 18. And, uh, I do make it to the show.
Well, you can make it six feet or taller, six feet or more, or you can encompass the 73 inches.
How, wait, I'm confused now. The access and maintenance area requirement between fences is 36 inches between fences, not the height of the fence?
Right.
Okay, you have to go back to the first of it, and it defines what a fence is.
Yeah, by changing the 73, we lost, most things in fences.
A fence could mean any wall or structure 72 inches or taller.
Or it could be 18 inches or taller.
Yes.
An 18 inches is-
That's probably a small little piece of fence. That's a probably a small little piece of fence. I have a neighbor that has an 18-inch fence. I walk between him and the next door neighbor. Out front, yeah. Why? I don't know. It's decorative, it's a, it's just a decorative fence.
But we're, but we're talking about an ordinance fence.
Okay, so why not just leave it, a fence is any wall or structure, period? And then have in the thing that, uh, somewhere in the, the body then, that, uh, no permits are required for a fence, which is where I was looking at fence permits. No, uh, permit is required for a fence, uh, under six foot or six foot or less.
Then what you're talking about is just striking, for the purpose of this ordinance, the term "fence" shall mean any wall or structure constructed-
For the purpose of the-
Of the enclosing, screening, restricting access to-
Or decorating.
Decorating of any wall, building, or structure.
Yeah, forget that, more than 18 or six foot or whatever.
Don't put a height to it at all.
If a permit's not required, how is this gonna be identified beforehand and being enforced? Because by, by the time we identify that there is an issue, it's already existing. So, who's to say Horton, Lynn Horton put it out? Or who's to say when whoever put it out? If there isn't a permit required, and there isn't, I mean-
If we do, as you suggested earlier, if we initiate an amendment to the planned development, then that could be put into force in Georgetown, is that correct?
Go forward, if it's successful.
So it's an initiative, an amendment to the planned development.
Right.
Because this is a standalone ordinance, and what you're, you suggested earlier was an amendment to the planned development. Okay, we have, uh, the motion, the original motion has been withdrawn. We are back to the discussion of this again. Before there is a motion, is there any further discussion from council?
Am I clear that, uh, we're saying now that a fence is any wall or structure? We leave out height for, uh, the purposes of, and then under, uh, fence permits, that, uh, you only need a fence permit for anything higher, taller than six foot?
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, okay.
If we do that, it doesn't change the problem that keeping it worded right now creates.
It's a rule.
Yeah, I mean, you're kinda just moving the definition around, so it still basically does the same thing.
But then going forward with the, uh, city initiating an amendment to the-
Well, if you're initiating an amendment to the planned development-
Want to adopt this ordinance, initiate the amendment to the PD, and then come back and repeal this, if the PD goes-
That'd be the great way to, to me. What you just said, adopt this ordinance, then go, try to go with the other method to get it on the plan and put it on.
Put it in one, that we adopt this ordinance with, uh, with the purpose of an, and, initiate an amendment to the planned development.
Yes, both.
And then with the correction, the question we're talking about, the six foot?
The definition of, uh, the definition, yeah, and strike the "or shall exist."
And the permit requirements will just remain as they are today?
Do you have to apply for a permit?
Well, that's what I'm asking.
No, I, I'm against applying for a permit there.
Well, as they are today, it's the building code.
Oh, okay.
This doesn't amend the building code.
Okay. Councilman Smith, do you have any questions?
I, I think to do something that, knowing full well we're gonna undo it, is a waste of time, and would be a joke. I think we need to have the city initiate the, the, the action that Julie's talking about.
The amendment?
I mean, there's, there's no sense in creating an ordinance and causing a problem, and then taking the ordinance away at a period of time, like, why, I mean, why, why, why do that? What's the point?
Councilman Jess, can we, can you?
But, Julie, what kind of timeframe are we talking now, as far as initiating this ordinance? You were talking about deadlines, as far as notifications and stuff like that?
Yes, the, the deadlines are, um, basically 15 and 10 days for mailing and newspaper. It does go to the P&amp;Z before it goes to council, but it could be where it is in front of the council for your June meeting, possibly the May meeting, if there's enough time for the P&amp;Z to meet and mail the notices.
As long as we can, um, we probably have to contract out the mailing, but as long as we can contract out the mailing to all of the resident, or, I guess, all of the property owners in Georgetown, and then everyone 200 feet, um, I guess, outside that perimeter. If we contract that out, as far as the publication and, and getting that public notice ready, we can have it to P&amp;Z in May, and then back to you at your regular May meeting.
What do you start with, Charlie?
Councilman Moore? Councilman White, do you have any other, uh, comments? Okay, uh-
I still wanna go forward with the motion you put there.
Now, wait a minute. You went through that, we're making another one.
No, no, not that. Oh, I thought you were to-
I did, I, we, well, we asked about the initiation of amendment to the PD, and it was, the original motion has been withdrawn, and a motion has not been made.
Okay, then I make a motion, that we approve this document as written, with the exception of the "or shall exist," remove from it, with full meaning of representing it through a PD request, but that way, at least it will stop any kind of fencing that's being done over the next two, one to two, while we're doing this process.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second call, do we have a second? Third and final call, do we have a second? Motion failed due to the lack of a second. Are there any other motions at this time?
I'll make a motion that we direct the city to, uh, initiating the action necessary.
We have a motion, that we, uh, direct the city to initiate an amendment to the planned development. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? And, uh, all of the, no other discussion, those in favor, uh, please raise your hand. Billy, did you go for dinner? It is unanimous. Motion passed to initiate an amendment to the planned development. At this time, we will convene into executive session in accordance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Code of Government Co-Governments Law. The city council will go into closed session, uh, for the out of- session for the items to convene pursuant to section 5510.074 personnel matters, matters for evaluation and discipline of the city manager. Can we go to the next one? The time that we are going into this is number twenty-one. Council will go across the floor. Number twenty, take any action necessary as a result of the executive session. There will be no action taken at this time. Next, we have department reports. We will start with Chief Barnes.
I have nothing at this time.
Chief Landon?
Nothing at this time.
I'm sure Chief Landon would like to remind to all of you that there is a golf tournament coming up.
There's a golf tournament. Our annual fundraiser this year, we're going to help Riley, to benefit Riley, have the proceeds go to, and help them better than they can use. It'll be the twenty-sixth, if anybody needs any information, just let me know.
And it's never too late to sign up. He'd be glad to sign you up. Can they even show up that day with money?
You can't show up that day. If you want to play, though, we could recommend that you get your team in as soon as possible. We are filling up pretty quick. We've still got quite a few slots left, so it's not a huge hurry, but it might be a full field, so.
Do they need a team?
They don't need a team. We do have individuals also. So if it's just you who wants to play, you can go play by yourself.
My husband doesn't mind me on top.
Or they can just sponsor.
Yeah, if they can just sponsor, if they just want to give money, or if they want to come volunteer. We also have volunteer spots that are still available, that are gonna be helping out on the golf, things like that.
It's a warm big loss, so important. Just one?
Uh, there may be a little drop in pressure tonight. We're working on the water leak tonight at twelve. Shouldn't be that much. We should have a vacuum service in two hours, if we start. Thanks, ladies and gentlemen.
Jennifer, did you have anything you wanted to add? Okay.
Karen?
Karen, council, versus the community center. We've got our first check from insurance. The biggest issue has been the bays and the community center itself. Contractors currently working inside the community center to repair, re-level the ceiling, repair the tiles, and while we're in there, we're going ahead, moving forward with getting the improvements that council had elected to make on the community center in this year's budget, as far as replacing the windows, tile, things of that nature. While they are re-leveling the ceiling, we've asked them if they could raise it, and they're saying that they could possibly raise the ceiling another four to ten inches. They haven't given us a conclusive ceiling height that they're gonna be able to achieve, but it's part of the repairs and the leveling. So instead of a room looking at as, being a grand room, and being our community room, but not really having the feel of being as large as it really is, and trying to get the ceiling up as much as we can. Of course, we've got the ductwork, HVAC, and the electrical control, so the ceiling can only go so much higher, but we'd like for the main, the main portion of the roof that's affected to be raised just a little bit, give more of that sense of develop-iveness and a sense of, this is probably the improvement that we're gonna be able to make for that, that facility for the next few years. We're still in debate, well, we're not in debate with the fire department barracks, they're gonna have to replace that roof, but we're still in, you can say, debate, negotiation, however you want to say it, but the insurance company is, we're getting a lot of pushback on the police building, where you're all in, good, what's, what's in there?
Ceiling tiles that are...
No, the seizures, is it seize?
Oh, in the, oh, you're talking about in the barn?
The barn. The barn that's half public works, half PD, we're still getting a lot of pushback, so, you know, that's the one behind the city all. So the main thing right now is, insurance is stating what they, what they won't pay for, and we're telling them what they will pay for, and so somewhere, we're gonna have to find the happy medium so we can get that accomplished. On the engineer that came up out of Houston, that they paid for because they didn't like the first analysis, and he stood out in the parking lot and stated to us that we're gonna rip the roof off of, off the community center and off the fire department bays, and replace the whole roof and all the gutters and everything. Well, he got home, he wrote his report that was consistent with the first engineer's report, and so we're getting a lot of, in the leveling of the ceiling, the whole idea is, okay, why are we not ripping the roof off? Why are we not taking care of these issues? Because this is what your engineer said. And so there's, there's a lot of ambiguity as far as that's concerned. Where we are right now is that we're placing all the fasteners and stating that the roof that is currently on there is safe and sound according to both engineers, Delta, the manufacturer of the building that sold years ago. They're saying that the facades, we're saying and they're saying the facades come off, but how that happens, and whether the gutter's gonna be upsized, and all of these bounce bounce, and all the little semantics that are still to be discussed and evaluated, but the main thing right now is we're trying to get the community center and the fire department bays the way that is best, get them up to code, get them as accessible as possible, so that way we can, you know, get what's due us per our insurance policy, but at the same time, we've got to get back to doing our business, which is the fence of the library, having our council meetings in there, and even going back to having their events there. So that's where we're on the community center. It's not all done, but we're steadily working towards things to, you know, on the streets. I've had streets from several different citizens. I know councilwoman Torres asked, I know the mayor's asked about the streets, inclement weather, freezing and everything, made where we had to get into spring. Now we're in the spring, we're getting quite a bit of rain. Again, our streets, our partnership is with county for potholes and streets. We want to make sure that the money we spend on these are spent wisely, that we don't end up having to do double repairs and potholes. So I understand they're a consistent problem, and we've seen the tech stops coming out and filling the holes, even during, you know, one is just sprinkling outside, but if you look at those holes that they repaired a few weeks ago, they're back and open again on five and one twenty-one and everything. We don't want, we don't want to spend that kind of money. We don't have the tech stop now, so we want to do the potholes once. So please bear with us, avoid them as best you can. We are addressing them, we're also getting together with the county to get a comprehensive quote on what streets we're gonna attack, and getting the cameras in to inspect the sewers, so that way we don't lay a new street, even though the street's in terrible shape. But we don't want to lay, lay a new street over a sewer that's partially collapsed, or is, or will collapse if we put a new street over it, and then we've got a bigger issue with compliance. So we're trying to work in concert with all that. I know the first thing is the potholes, and Steve is working with county to get a comprehensive quote to get that addressed. So those are the two big things. Other than that, the rain has been helpful in some respects, but hasn't, as far as shut, had shut down the plane again recently, Steve?
We didn't have to this weekend, we stayed with the five hundred thousand, but we did three days the week before.
So, you know, the new skater will help out as far as notifying him what's going on when we get, when we get big rains, but we're trying to, trying to improve things, we're trying to make sure that we're not throwing citizens' dollars at fines, and that we're actually attacking problems as, as they come right now, because we are in a reactive phase, but we're working with engineering and staff to make sure that we're, we're trying to get ahead of these problems. Development side, new and exciting, D.R. Horton came in two Januaries ago, not this past, but two Januaries ago, and showed me what all the property was theirs, and of course they sold the south end to Arson Development that's brought the hundred and sixty-plus home lots to y'all in the south end of Georgetown. Well, now Horton's dropped off the plans, and engineering's finishing up with their notes on the north side of Georgetown. So what borders the, I believe the baggage church property on the north side, that north portion of Georgetown is Horton's brought the preliminary plan in for, for us to move forward on and work through all the little, little issues. But development is coming, and the main thing is, we need to see that dark turning, we need to see those impact fees, so we can, we can start addressing the other issues, you know, pouring more water to the city and taking care of the city problems consistently. So, I'm sorry.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you get a projected, projected start of the community center?
They're already started, and they're already in, Steve and you.
They're already...
Yes, they're starting last Friday. So I know Chief Smith and Chief Barnes are working around, but they're not giving me a consistent, they're not giving me a finish date because insurance is paying out necromania and we're having to...
It's a long start.
What's that? Yes, ma'am. It's a long start, and so it's not just sitting, speaking, you know, if you want to, go put your pies in the window and see what's being done, because...
None of our equipment was damaged during that, was it?
What's that?
None of our items were damaged, right? The screen...
The ceiling tiles and screens, and of course the windows are plus glass, and that's why we're trying to replace them.
No, no, I mean, was the screen damaged when the roof and everything? Or reject your screen?
Oh, no, I don't think so.
I hope none of that was damage.
And Lynn, impact fees. We had our meeting with, with impact fee committee. Lynn, if you want to articulate exactly that.
We presented the land use assumptions, the proposed capital improvement plan, and the recommended impact fees at last week's advisory committee, which is the P and Z, close to Mr. Benton, and they made a recommendation, and the maps and the, and the recommendations are now at city hall for public display, and you'll see on the next month's agenda, your, the recommendations to adopt the new impact fees. So all that, all the work that went into developing the land use assumptions and the capital improvements program are available for viewing for the public.
We have a public hearing next one to discuss that.
Okay, we have council's closing comments. Real strong. Yeah. I have no comments. Councilman Smith. Councilman Jess?
Yes, ma'am. As a representative of the chamber of commerce, I'd like to invite everyone to the chamber breakfast tomorrow morning at Del Patio, Biscamico, eight o'clock in the morning. Come see what the chamber's all about. Love to have you, everybody. I know we're late, but eight o'clock's gonna be early, but everybody, everybody's welcome for that. And also, note blow for the chamber, we need the candidate, program. Got one on the fourteenth and one on the twentieth. Everybody's invited to attend that. That's all that. I thank them.
Good day, everybody, children's birthdays. Councilman...
I just want to thank our staff for all your hard work on every department. We've got a lot of challenges ahead of us, and recognize, and I've heard a lot of people have recognized a lot of great changes within the city that move in our city in a good direction, and I just want to thank all of y'all for y'all's hard work.
Councilman Plank, you're the last.
Okay. I just wanted to thank the police department, and Tim, and, and the fire department, and all the city people that were involved in the rally in the, for Riley, that the, where he was brought back into town, and they created the parade, and the water shooting over it, and all, or ladder trucks up there holding the banner, and it was really, really something neat to see, and really great out of the community, is pulling together with that young man, and I'm just super proud of you.
Okay, and my closing comments are, play golf, and remember to vote, name the tip at the Valonstein Library. At this time, I will take a motion that we adjourn. Councilman Smith, and second tip, by Councilman Plank, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, it is unanimous, we are adjourned at ten thirty-two. There it is.